...for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just getting logged on here. This is the first thing, the motion to accept the agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda, please?
Same move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Now, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Harrison for some recognition of our students, which is always a wonderful thing to start a meeting with.
And it's one thing to always to accomplish when we want to get a packed house is to acknowledge our wonderful students. The one thing that we have the great fortune of in Irvington is to have students that are talented in just so many ways. It's fabulous to acknowledge students' academic achievements. We had some students in being recognized from Main Street School just a couple of weeks ago, and tonight we have that great opportunity of looking at that nice balance and to consider how well-rounded so many of our student athletes are. Tonight, we have the great fortune and really the pride to be able to acknowledge and recognize our girls soccer team and the cross-country team, who are being recognized not just by the Board of Education in Irvington, but being recognized across the state of New York as having the highest GPA in their respective areas. So you are the scholar champions here for your individual sports, and it is something that we all need to be so proud of and to recognize you all, to acknowledge the level of work that you put in in the classroom, but then to do on the course, on the field, and to be able to balance all those things in your life is most impressive, and you're role models for our other students and for the rest of us in the community. To acknowledge you and to recognize you for your great accomplishments, I'd like to ask Mr. McCormick, our athletic director, to please come to the microphone and say a few words. So, Mr. McCormick.
Good evening. This never seems to get old. For those of you who've been here before, we've had this honor in the past, and I think it's a tremendous tribute to our student athletes who put up a lot of time on the fields, but also dedicate an incredible amount of time to the work in the classroom, and to their coaches, who, you know, have great expectations both on the field and the classroom, the tremendous flexibility they allow their students to perform both, and to excuse them from practice when need be, and to understand their time constraints, and to really push them to become the best scholar athlete, student athlete they can be. So tonight, we have the girls soccer team and their head coach Ernest Harmon. And the boys cross-country team, their head coach Chris Barry. He's assisted by Daryl Thornton, who's not here tonight. And at this time, I'd like to call up the executive director of Section One Athletics, Ms. Jen Simmons, who will make the presentations to both teams.
Thank you very much, and I will also reiterate, this doesn't get old. I have been here a couple of other times, and Irvington is not new to this award. The Scholar-Athlete Award has been being given for the last 23 years, and you should take deep pride in the fact that your school has won it 29 times in the last 23 years. So that is extremely impressive. Tonight, you have cross-country and girls soccer. It's the second time for girls soccer, and it is the fourth time for your boys cross-country. And I will tell you, for the application of putting in is a very high standard, and there's well over 350 schools that apply, so they at least reach the minimum, and your school has come out on top across New York State. So again, congratulations to you. I represent New York State Public High School and Section One, and what a great honor and what great students you have.
This time, Mr. Barry, will you come forward and recognize the students. They will be receiving a pin.
And they had a 100 average.
A 100 average.
100 average for the entire team. I'm sorry, for the number qualifying for the team. And boys, if you can all stand up, I'll make sure I don't mess it up. I'm just going to call you down. And if you permit, what is the way out that Adrian's wearing the shirt of the invitation on these boys won earlier on that one, just give that to that man, Paul Star. And then our girls team, I think, was second to the stage, so I'll give them a shout-out.
Girls soccer with a 99.8.
Very special to the coaches and the coaches there. I'm pleased to be part of this wonderful school. It makes me feel very happy, especially because they've never asked to take off from practices. Always made up to be a practice, asked for more time to practice. I was extremely surprised that you weren't as glad. I told you why. Because no one's ever asked to be absent from practice. Nor did you tell me you needed time to take off to a gathering. Tomorrow, I need to study. I was extremely pleased with that. I have to tell you, I was very surprised, pleasantly surprised. So at this point, I'll call all of you sitting in this general area, so I'm just going up and get you a nice pin. Take a look at this, it looks like, wow, great. Eileen Paul. The next, just the next, both of us. Congratulations. And I hope it's announced. And Jen Jarvis.
Yeah.
You need to make a shake on my hand.
Yeah. Thank you for coming. And then we've just become the sort of supercarrier of whatever disease.
Right.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
So we certainly have quite a full agenda this evening, but I have to say, I think we're going to finish the meeting with applause, just like we started off in acknowledging our students, because we're going to be talking about the wonderful school budget at the end of the meeting. But in between, we are going to have conversations, presentation from Dr. Core and our administrative team from the high school on shifts in the Common Core and its impacts at the high school level. We're also going to talk about calendar tonight and discussion about where, what our calendar may look like for next year. But then also, we're going to talk about some opportunities that are presented via legislation regarding some tax relief for veterans in our community. But first, I do want to just speak to a couple important items before we get on with the presentation. State Education Department made headlines yesterday and today, and those headlines in many ways may be misleading to some, and I want to kind of provide some clarity, but at the same time, fully acknowledge that this situation is still a little open-ended. Yesterday, there was a release that came out from State Ed that they talked about adjusting their approach to the implementation of the Common Core. A lot of folks leapt to begin to believe that it means that we're throwing the Common Core away, that we're no longer implementing the Common Core, and I want to be very clear that that is not true, that is not the case. The state is still currently on their path and still holds a strong commitment to the implementation of the Common Core. Where there are shifts, there are some that are obvious, that can be impactful to kids in schools, and probably their subheading, the subtitle to any of these stories is going to stand out, and it's looking at where the high school graduation requirements and accountability fall. They are reporting that they're going to shift, and students aren't going to be held accountable to meet the Common Core graduation standards until the year 2022. So we're looking at children that would have had nearly their full experience under the Common Core before they are to meet those requirements. There were other areas that some of the information had already been shared but was tied into this press release, such as the delay of the implementation of PARK, which is the new standardized assessment that New York is anticipating adopting. Rather than that being implemented in 2014-15, we're looking at 1516, that there are still two years of pilot testing before us. Another area of importance and conversation that we've had in this room with the Board of Education refers to the data dashboard in the INBLOOM, which is the data tracking, the data mining devices that were being marketed and pushed towards school districts, that the commissioner has announced that they're going to delay the launch of that initiative, allowing State Ed to have time to meet with and negotiate with legislators around those particular concerns. The SED is also looking to authorize a waiver to the U.S. Department of Education. The waiver would provide relief from No Child Left Behind, and would specifically focus on children with severe disabilities who are not eligible for alternate assessments to be tested at their grade level, but looking at their chronological age, so it's providing flexibility for students in how they would be assessed. There's other areas that are tied into this that may not have tremendous impact, and the statements were rather vague, but talking about increasing flexibility for local school districts and administering local assessments. Well, school districts, since they're local, school districts already had that authority to determine what types of tests they were looking to administer. I think it probably comes into play for school districts that implemented layers and layers of assessment associated with APPR, because another one of the initiatives released tied to this press release and the work that's going to come forth from SED is to provide school districts with the opportunity for expedited review if they are revising their APPR plans because of changes in assessment. So while it certainly stirred some exciting headlines, it is interesting to hear that some of our politicians, some of the bureaucrats in Albany are responding to the concerns from the education community, from the parent community, but at the same time, I think we have to step back and wait and see what guidance comes in. I think we have to see what the impact is for us locally in Irvington, but there is movement on this front. But again, I think it's important to reiterate that we need to be cautious, that we're not saying Common Core is going away. Common Core is alive and well in the state of New York, and therefore, we continue on our objective to make sure that we're continuing to align our curriculum and adapt our instructional practices to meet those expectations. With respect to our referendum initiative, we've had some good progress in short periods of time. We have formulated a Fields Projects Committee that is already underway. They have met a couple of times, and they are working with a resource team, whether it's district administrators ranging from Ms. Miller, myself, Mr. McCormick, Mr. Knowles, to some community resources and industry professionals that are reviewing research. They are involved in, going to be meeting with other industry experts around different options they have before them, and our Buildings and Grounds Committee is engaged in assessing and evaluating the different opportunities that we see before us to make some improvements to our school facilities. I encourage everybody to stay in touch with this process. We will be making some announcements in the near future about opportunities for not only public engagement, but to announce when the actual presentations will be from the respective committees with their recommendations for the Board of Education's consideration. We certainly not only want to be able to hear those reports and to have the community witness those reports, but we also want to have additional opportunity for the community to contribute to that dialogue. So we will make sure we broadcast those dates loud and clear, so we can engage as many folks in the community as possible. I want to ask Dr. Core to take a minute to talk about an important event that occurred last week in this very facility.
Sure. So on, I can't track the date anymore.
Thursday.
Thursday. On Thursday, we had our second paint tank meeting, which was surrounded, which was around technology, so we're calling it our technology paint tank. And the premise behind it is to put people in the room who have interest and knowledge about technology and really want to be part of the thinking that helps us to consider what should our technology look like in the Irvington School District. This was the second opportunity. We had administrators, teachers, and parents who were part of the evening, and I want to say, we had about 30, about 30 people who joined us that night, and we considered the different aspects of technology that is a district we should be thinking about, and we narrowed it down to three key categories. Integration of technology in our classrooms, technology curriculum, so that refers to the actual knowledge and skills that we want our students to have or know and be able to do when they leave our district, and professional development. Because if we're going to be successful integrating technology in our classrooms, we need to ensure that our teachers are being provided with opportunities to learn and understand how to best make use of technology in their classrooms. In our first paint tank meeting in June, we also had infrastructure as a topic, and when we broke into groups and we gave people the option to decide what group they'd be interested in being in, the only people that really picked infrastructure was Edge Tech, and they're our providers of our technology. So they were very interested in talking about infrastructure, but we were thrilled to see that our parents, our teachers, and our administrators all really wanted to talk about instruction. And in this case, we saw the same thing. The work that we did in our small groups will guide us as we take our next steps to developing a framework and a plan for how we want to move forward with implementing technology in our schools.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Just moving right along, we will turn now to the Common Core Learning Standards presentations in our high school.
Very good. So I feel like we're a mini-series now, and this is our big conclusion that we've all been waiting for, in that we began a couple of months ago with a presentation from Dr. Core and our administrative team at the elementary schools, plural, that provided an overview of the shifts that are occurring in instruction as a result of the Common Core. Then we had a wonderful presentation from our middle school leadership team just a couple of weeks ago that talked about those changes, and tonight, we're going to focus on high school and the impacts of the Core and what is occurring there to meet these needs. So with more conversation on the Core, I'll introduce Dr. Core.
My whole life, I had those kinds of jokes.
I didn't make an apple comment.
Exactly. Okay, so, good evening, everyone. I am actually excited to be here for part three in the mini-series, and as you may notice, if you were here for the other two, we purposely kept the same background and the same design on the presentation, because we want to send a really strong message, which is, we are on a continuum of learning here, and when our children enter the Irvington Schools in kindergarten, we are, we begin the journey. I think that's actually what the Dows Lane logo says, the journey, right? And it really is true. And so tonight, we get to talk a little bit about, so what happens? We go through all the K through V experience, and then we talked about the six-eight experience, and so what will high school look like? And I just want to preface this by saying, you know, high schools are a completely different environment. For years and years, we have had New York State testing at grades three through eight. So for years, our elementary and middle schools have really been guided by the New York State assessments. When you get to high school and you look at the numbers of courses that we offer, the actual number of courses that resulted in a New York State assessment are small in number compared to everything else that we offer and a student's experience. So tonight, we're going to talk about something that is really the launch and the beginning of a new era in education, and an expectation that high schools are starting to rethink how we do school and what we do in school. And I may have shared previously, I know I did at the performance data presentation, that there are some schools that only give the five mandated regions. So some schools are more regions-driven than other schools. So when we talk about the high school tonight, we're talking about it through a fairly narrow lens when we talk about the Common Core, although what we would really, the message that we'd like you to take with you is an understanding of how the Common Core has started to create a more cohesive approach to the way that we do high school or we build our high schools. So tonight, you'll see that we're going to refer to the shifts in ELA and literacy. We highlighted those more specifically for the elementary school and for the middle school, but as I have said each time now, what you'll notice is the shifts are the shifts, so they are the same shifts across all grade levels. We're going to start tonight with Common Core strands for ELA, and again, this is the same exact slide. So Common Core strands for ELA, reading. Under the strand of reading, there are two subtopics, in literature and informational text. The other strands are writing, speaking, speaking and listening, and language. The domains for reading, we shared those at the last presentation, but we didn't actually unpack those, so we thought that this might be a good time to just remind everybody about what those domains are and why the domains are important. So the way that the Common Core is designed for literacy is it is designed into these five domains, and the beauty part of doing this work and planning for this presentation, working with Dave Kohn and Deb Marinello, was these are the anchor standards.
And at the first two presentations.
Just a minute.
I talk pretty loud, though. Do you want to do something with the radio?
Switch.
Can you pick up one of those?
I'm very flexible.
Thank you. So the great thing is, we were planning this, is when you, if you were present or if you looked at the K5 presentation or the six-eight presentation, we talked a lot about grade-level specific standards, because we shared second-grade standards, or we shared fifth-grade standards, or seventh grade or eighth grade. So we're going to talk a little bit about the grade-level specific, but in the end, these anchor standards, we are now at the end game. This is where we're going. The end game are the anchor standards, and our graduating seniors should be demonstrating the knowledge and skills that we have as part of the anchor standards. So tonight, when you hear either Dave or Deb talk about the anchor standards, you will know, this is where we are going. We are starting in kindergarten, and this is where we expect every senior. And when I say that, this is our benchmark, it's our base level, it doesn't mean that as you're sitting here listening, you're thinking, well, do they do more than that? Well, yes, it doesn't mean that it's all we do. What we are doing is making a commitment that all children leaving the Irvington School District will have this baseline of meeting the anchor standards. So the anchor standards for reading are broken out into these domains. Key ideas and details, so standards one, two, and three, whether I'm in kindergarten or whether I'm in 11th grade, all fit into the domain key ideas and details, and we know as adult readers, we are always using those key ideas and details to help us understand. It informs our thinking as adult readers. So standards one, two, and three always focus on the key ideas and details. Four, five, and six are always about craft and structure. It's understanding the way a text goes. In other words, it's opening a book and knowing what to expect based on the format and the structure that the author chose to use when creating that text. Seven, eight, and nine is always about the higher-level thinking. It's always the integration of ideas. Again, if I'm in kindergarten or whether I'm in 11th grade, seven, eight, and nine, you can always expect will be, how am I integrating what I know? How am I synthesizing? How am I understanding what I've learned, what I've read? 10 is the text complexity, which we've talked quite a bit about, ensuring that we're providing rigorous enough texts for our students that while just right texts are important, we need to be pushing our students to be reading higher-level texts, and we need to be providing the instruction so that they can be successful. And responding to literature, so anything in the Common Core Learning Standards that is highlighted- need to be pushing our students to be reading higher-level texts, and we need to be providing the instruction so that they can be successful. And responding to literature, so anything in the Common Core Learning Standards that is highlighted in yellow means that New York State has added that to the Common Core standards. And so we love in Irvington, because this has been an area for us and an area of focus, responding to literature is both a reading standard and a writing standard. And it is something that we value, and it is something that we work on at every grade level. So the anchor standards are divided into those domains, and as you keep those in your head, you'll understand as we go through, those domains begin to weave together to create the understanding and the learning for students. So as I had referenced before, for the middle school and the elementary grades, you saw it actually went across. So each grade had its own set of standards. So grade three has standards, four has standards. One of the things we'd like you to notice about the structure of the Common Core when you get to high school is they have banded these standards by grades nine and 10 and by grades 11 and 12. And sometimes you'll see they're very similar with just a nuance of a change, and sometimes you'll see they're quite different.
Okay. So I'm going to be sharing with you how we move this theoretical practice, this theoretical work into practice and what that will look like at the high school level. So the purpose of this slide is to really set us on a roadmap. So when we look at the reading, writing, listening, and speaking standards, that's our big topic. And I'm going to be drilling down for you how within each of those topics, there's a focus on a domain. So for the purpose of our talk tonight, the focus of craft and structure might be an example. And then I'm going to drill it down even further to speak to how the Core addresses an anchor standard. So for the purpose of my progression, as we look at an example specific to the high school, it's really going to be unpacking that anchor standard five, which is to analyze the structure of texts. So we see here, anchor standard five, this will show you the progression. And when we think about how, this is how it would look at any of the grade levels that have come before me. So the elementary and the middle school presentation would have referenced the same anchor standard. So when we take a look how eighth grade progresses into ninth through 12, we can see that anchor standard five has nuances of change. So when we take a look at eighth grade to analyze in detail, we can see the highlighted text really points out for us how this anchor standard progresses in complexity and sophistication. So for ninth and 10th graders, it digs into the author's ideas or claims and how they're developed and refined. Now you take that as your anchor, and you build on that even further now with 11th and 12th graders not only having to analyze in detail the author's ideas and claims, but now they move to the next level, one of the highest levels of understanding, which is evaluation. And they're evaluating the effectiveness of the structure that an author uses. And that really takes us into the highest level of sophistication that this anchor standard can show us. So what does that mean for us? So what you're seeing here now is an actual example of a 10th grade English task. And the purpose for us to show you this tonight is to focus on the format. So you'll notice here that this teacher begins her thinking with how this task directly speaks to the Core. So when we're really framing out a task for students, what this is really about is the thinking that the teacher is doing in preparation. And we know that some of the best work that goes into teaching is the thing that, is the work that happens offstage. Before you're in your classroom, this is the thinking that goes into the shifts of the Core. So you can see here that this teacher has named the Common Core standards, how it fits into the sequence for class, so it's thinking about prerequisite skills and what the task is at hand, but most importantly, it speaks to the learning outcomes. And this is where the most important work happens. This is what we want students to know and to be able to do. And it speaks directly here to the language of the Core, and that should be a theme that we carry throughout this presentation, and that we want our teachers to become more explicit with the language of the Core. The more explicit we can become in our instruction, the more clear we can be in naming it for students, the more we can raise the level of expectation for what we want our students to know and to be able to do. So this specifically speaks to close reading, the determination of main idea, and then that most important piece at the bottom, which is the inferential thinking and the use of evidence and analysis. So on this slide, it also speaks to the planning. And when we look to a teacher's plan, we get a window into the work that a teacher has to do, the thinking that they have to prepare. And much of the work that we do with our teachers in UBD, which is Understanding by Design, is really thinking about the thinking. So what this teacher has laid out are her steps, her thinking that she needs to do and the thinking that her students need to do. So what you pull from here, besides what's highlighted in the yellow text, are words like modeling, annotating, understanding, close examination, where a teacher may also be thinking about the questions, not only that they will ask, but anticipating the questions that students should be able to ask of their text, but then also looking at how students will find evidence, focus on details, and at the bottom, you can see that there is a deep connection to vocabulary exploration. So this would be an example of how anchor standard five, which you can see in the little box that's dropped off to the side, really shows how all those words that I just pulled out of that teacher's thinking and planning, the modeling, the annotating, the underlining, the noting, the evaluating, is all notated in this actual student's piece of work. So this student has really participated in a close reading of this text, which means they've gone through a process of reading the same text through different lenses to really deepen their understanding. What's underlined are specific examples, as you see in the anchor standard, to text and claims, but also you can see the thinking that the student is doing in connection to content of class. One of the most important aspects of the Core is the stated relationship between reading and writing. Students read to write, and they write to read. And what the Core does for us, it really names that one cannot be done in isolation from the other. And when we're doing reading, we're connecting it to writing, and when we're writing, we're connecting it to what we read. So this is something you would have seen as well in the elementary and middle school presentations, and it's showing this real relationship between these two types of work that we want students to do. What's most interesting is if you can look at the two examples on the bottom, is that we see the same language. So if we look at the bottom two boxes, for reading, it's named responding to literature, and in writing, it's named responding to literature. And it's done purposeful in that way, because it's really meant to show that when we're reading and responding and writing to respond, we really want to look at how this is explicitly named for students. So in keeping in line with that direct relationship between reading and writing, I'm going to shift you now to look at how the same anchor standards and domain areas for reading, we now see it in the same format for writing. So what we have here are the five domains, just as you saw for reading, but this is directly related to the standards for writing. Again, you'll see that the anchor standards are drilled down. There's explicit progression in how each of these anchor standards look, especially as we look to progressing from eighth grade into the high school. But this one has even a more specific nuance, and then if you look at anchor standard two, writing informative and explanatory texts, you can see that the anchor standard is the anchor standard, and as Dr. Core stated, the high school is where it happens. Our anchor standards are where we want our students to be. So what this shows us here is the progression from ninth to 12th grade now even drills it down even further with more nuance. So you can see, from ninth to 12th grade, we're focusing on complexity, the accuracy in which students are effectively choosing not only their text, but the selection and organization and the analysis of content. But then the nuance even brings us to the ninth and 10th, which is the subtopics, so an introduction of their topic. And you can see that in 11th and 12th grade, there's a connectivity that students are being demanded of. And we're looking at how each of these elements builds on what was preceded to create a unified whole. So it's the ultimate application of all their skills. So how this would look in direct examples, so what we showed you prior was a reading example, a close reading example, where students were asked to respond to the reading of both literature and informational text. This is a directly related writing assignment to that same task. Where students here are asked to identify at least two outside sources to support their ideas. They have to choose what those are, and we're going to take a look at that even further. But before we do that, this again speaks to the planning of the teacher. So when we take a look at this page, what should stand out to us are the learning targets. So again, the planning is behind-the-scenes work. This is the work that, this is the shift for teachers to bring about the shifts for our students. So when we take a look at the learning targets, this teacher is naming it as it's directly related to the Core. They will determine main idea, and they will support with concrete and inferential thinking. So in a traditional activity, what you may have seen is a student being simply asked, what is the main idea of this reading selection? Or they may be simply asked to define a vocabulary word. But in shifting to the Core, the act of defining and the act of really analyzing main idea are directly related to these learning targets which are named in the Common Core. So here we have an example where a student was connecting their reading, and they were supporting a claim as it relates to the age of reason, and they were charged with the task of using at least two outside sources to support their work. So what you see throughout this piece is the student's explicit naming of text evidence in direct support of their claim from multiple texts. So where you may have seen in a younger grade, where a student will support text from their initial reading activity, now you're seeing that students are having to respond with that connectivity to multiple pieces of text. And here would be an example of how we use assessment as our entry point, both as a learning tool, but also as a way to name what it is we want students to know and do, and a rubric. Common Core rubric is an absolute example of how our assessments and our instruction are related. So I'm going to move us now to the shifts. As Dr. Core spoke, the shifts are the shifts, no matter what grade level you're in, and across disciplines. So when we speak to the shifts, I'm speaking to the shift number two in specific, is the knowledge and the discipline. So I'm going to be walking you through a social studies and a science activity at our high school, where teachers have done explicit change in the way that they're instructing our students. And you're going to see that they're building in this literacy, this shift in the disciplines, and actually posing science and social studies tasks as reading and writing tasks. So here again, the anchor standard progresses out, just like it would in reading and writing, as it would in the discipline of a social studies classroom. So anchor number five, we can see in six through eight, they're describing how a text presents information. As they progress into ninth and 10th grade, they're not only describing, but now they're analyzing how the text uses structure to emphasize key points. Take that, describe, analyze, and now they're analyzing in detail how a complex primary source is structured. So that word complexity is a very important word as we get into the 11th and 12th grade expectations. So here is an example of a ninth grade social studies assignment in the Global One class. And what you can see here, again, is how the task is posed, how this teacher's thinking has been shifted in direct relation to the Core. This teacher has posed this social studies activity as a reading assignment. So you can see the first part of this assignment is a close reading. And again, close reading refers to a process in which we take students through the reading of the same text to deepen their understanding. It's explicit, and it's meant to really deepen their thinking from multiple, from a multiple-lens approach. It's also giving them a reading task in which we're really using a guided reading approach, where students are reading through the selection with an explicit Core-related expectation. So for this one, they're responding to text-dependent questions, and they are being asked explicitly to analyze text and support. Here again, is how a teacher can frame their task, which not only asks them to discuss tasks under what we would consider a close reading, but it pulls in this focus of definition. And if you take a look at the third column, it really talks about how we use text, we use structures to emphasize key points. So you can see here that the teacher is, the thinking behind this task is that the teacher is taking a student in a social studies classroom through a guided reading approach. And if we take a look at task number three, students reread the specific passages in response to a set of concise text-dependent questions. And there, the teacher has higher-level types of questions listed and preparedness for the student to respond. This would be an example of the writing that a student would be doing in a social studies classroom through a similar type of activity. And what we want to point out to you here is, not only is the, if you can see in quotes, and an opportunity to read this deeper, the student is directly using quotes to support their answer, but you can also see that there is an integration of vocabulary that I'm going to speak to in some slides moving forward. And I know I keep saying it, but I have a true belief that reflective practice and the work that goes behind the scenes and offstage, as our work with Candy McKay would call it, onstage work, which is the work we do in our classrooms, is so impacted by the offstage work that we have our teachers do. The Core is not simply about what we want students to do, it's the shifts that we want our teachers to take on. And so much of the shift is about changing our thoughts and changing our practice and our approach to content. So in this, we can clearly see in this teacher's reflection that she's responding to the importance of the vocabulary shift. But if you take a look at the third bullet, she makes an explicit reflection about the simple length, not only of the excerpt, but how much time that they're spending reading a document. And that directly relates to the impact of close reading and the power of close reading that it can have on our students' ability to analyze text at a higher level. Shift six, as I said, I wanted to speak a little more closely and dig in a little bit to the vocabulary that we are seeing in our academia. And it does use this terminology of tier two and tier three vocabulary. So it's important to point out, when we're speaking of tier two vocabulary, this is the vocabulary that's common across disciplines, when words that students will find across their day. When I think about the work that happens in elementary and middle school classrooms, where there's that interdisciplinary approach, this shift really, for me, speaks to the connectivity that we can create between our content areas at a high school level. Tier three are those vocabulary words that are content-specific. These are low occurrence words outside of what would be the content-specific classroom, but they are absolutely connected and needed for true understanding and depth of understanding of a content area. So now I'll take you through a final example on how the Common Core shift in literacy with focus on anchor standard five could look in a science classroom. So again, it's the theme that goes through. The anchor standard is the anchor standard, but the high school is really where the rubber hits the road. This is our end game. So when we take a look at how anchor standard five progresses through a science classroom, again, sixth through eighth grade, the expectation is the analysis of the structure an author uses. In ninth and 10th grade, it progresses that not only are they going to analyze the structure, but it's also an analysis of the connectivity and the relationship between concepts. At 11th and 12th grade, they're taking that relationship among concepts, and they're digging even deeper, because now they have to take that level of understanding and connectivity with the text structures and the categories that come through in the work that they're doing in their science classroom. So this would be an example of a unit that's done in our grade 10 Earth Science classroom. It's a typical water cycle type of activity, but what this represents for us, again, is the thinking that the teachers are doing and the shift that they're creating for students in the way they're naming activities. So if I take you to the second half of this paragraph, it really speaks to, in this activity, students will read about the water cycle and the underground water storage. Based on their understanding of porosity and permeability, students will design their own underground water storage system. So again, we're not just simply asking them, a traditional setting would be to read and answer questions, but this is taking it to that next level and really having to analyze the text on many levels in order to create something new. Again, we see in Earth Science Classroom 10th grade, where this teacher, again, is posing a science activity as a reading activity. So where we see direct language of the Core, determine central ideas, we also see that this teacher is specifically speaking to those tier three vocabulary words, using domain-specific words, and holding students to an expectation that they will be using those words in their answer. This teacher goes on to explain that this writing that can happen in science is directly related to the Core in the way that they have to use their domain-specific vocabulary, but it's also important to mention that this teacher is thinking to the new generation science standards. So here's an actual example of a student piece of work from this class, and what's important to note here, again, is the way the task is being posed. If you had to repeat this activity over again, how would you change the composition of your soil to retain the most amount of water? Use the words porosity and permeability in your answer. So again, this is not posed as a traditional, I want to know what it is you know, but through this answer, not only as a teacher, am I getting a sense of what you know, I'm getting a sense of what you're... getting a sense of what you're able to do with that information. It's raising the level of depth that we expect of our students and their understanding. So I'm going to end here again with the theme of teacher reflection. Again, I will share, the teacher work and the teacher thinking will impact our students' thinking. So I can end you with a reflection directly related to this activity that this teacher carried out with her students. "The integration of the Common Core learning standards had shown me that the higher order of thinking that is involved when students are asked to design a solution and test their ideas." And that really speaks to the spirit of what the Common Core is designed to push our students and our teachers to do.
Thanks, Deb. So now we're going to shift the dialogue to the mathematics side of the Common Core and again, how it's progressing not only through the elementary and middle school levels, but obviously now to the work that we're doing at the high school. So again, this is just a similar slide to reiterate the same shifts that we've talked about in the previous two meetings. They're the same six shifts. You'll hear one of these really coming across in some of my presentation tonight in my part of the presentation, which is about deepening understanding. But again, at the high school level, all of these shifts become critical and important. So this is a unique slide that we found and it's called, it comes right out of the Common Core materials, it's called "The Story of Functions." And really what it is, is it's a curriculum map for the full four-year cycle of high school mathematics. And we found this slide to be really interesting in a number of ways. First and foremost is the name "The Story of Functions." There was a comparable curriculum map for the elementary level of mathematics and it's called "The Story of Units." And if you think about it, it makes sense. At the elementary level, we want to start with the building blocks that speak to mathematics and their singular units. At the middle school level, the same document was referred to as "The Story of Ratios." So when we start taking those initial building blocks and comparing them together, you have your ratios. And then you progress to the highest concepts. At the high school level, it's called "The Story of Functions." And what we're talking about when we're talking about functions is how we group quantities together and start making comparative analysis to them. So it really speaks to just the names of these documents, speaks a lot to how the progression comes to the high school level and the thinking behind the mathematics. In addition, it's interesting because this speaks to the standard four-year cycle. Keep in mind that we have courses that go beyond pre-calculus, which is the Grade 12 listed here. Not only do we offer calculus, but we certainly have other classes and AP classes at the high school level. But what it also doesn't necessarily speak to is that we have students that have different rates of learning. So at the high school level, we have some flexibility. Again, this is the general standard of how the curriculum would map out over four years, but then it's certainly incumbent upon us to start to individualize that for each of our students and to recognize where there are students that may need to be on a pathway to get to higher levels of math even beyond what's listed here in Grade 12, as well as the students that may need to slow down a little bit and make sure that we're supporting their learning effectively to meet minimum standards as well. What we see at this next slide is really a shift in how we start to look at the Common Core and really some of the distinctions between what takes place at the lower levels and the high school. This slide would have looked different during the elementary and the middle school presentations because there, the mathematics is broken down by grade level. And you would see it as different grade levels. When you get to the high school level, so much of what happens in high school mathematics now becomes course-specific, but also these are the conceptual categories that find themselves interwoven in every single course that we offer in mathematics at the high school level. So again, that's a different way of thinking. We're not just thinking about it by grade level, we're really thinking about it by course and these core conceptual categories. And I'll just take you briefly through these conceptual categories. They're pretty self-explanatory, but here, number and quantity, we're talking about the building blocks again. We start off simply with whole numbers, it progresses through integers, fractions, rational, irrational numbers. And it progresses through to getting students to be able to think very comprehensively and higher-order thinking when we get into imaginary numbers and complex numbers and things like that. Then we talk about algebra. Obviously, when we're talking about algebra, we're talking about the ability to speak abstractly. We're using letters to represent variables and we're advancing the usage into more and more complex expressions and equations. Functions, as I mentioned before, and the stories of functions is when we start to group these quantities together and we start to use them for further analysis. So we're really starting to talk about very high-end relationships of quantities of building blocks. This is a very important slide and one that you'll hear me talk about a number of times because modeling, we really look at modeling as the way to really permeate through all of the different levels of mathematics at the high school level. And we really look at it from a standpoint of pedagogy. When we talk about modeling, what we're really talking about is the conceptual side of mathematics. Recently, there's been a shift to a very computational format for teaching mathematics, especially at the high school level. And that's where we would start to break things down and scaffold them into very fine points. But what we have found as mathematics teachers over the last 10, 15, 20 years when this pattern was happening, was that students were starting to learn their broader understandings of mathematics. There was a big need to pull back and get back to the point of teaching to deeper understanding and to the conceptualization of math, not just about being able to compute the correct answer. So modeling, we really look at as the link to be able to do that. It's the opportunity to create real-life problem-solving situations where students need to understand the conceptualization of what's going on in the math as well as how it relates to the real world. Geometry, obviously, is when we start talking about shapes and sizes and relative position of objects. And statistics and probability obviously gives us the opportunity to start looking at mathematics and creating analysis and really looking into the chances of opportunity and things occurring. So again, as I mentioned, modeling becomes a real important focal point for us. And the phrase that we've been talking about is it becomes this umbrella for us. It's the umbrella that brings the whole mathematics curriculum at the high school level together and a way for us to keep progressing through and thinking about how it matches up. So when we think about constantly naming and reinforcing the work that the students are doing, we want to constantly bring them back as well to these broader-scale concepts. So this slide and the next slide starts to talk about that even within those conceptual designs that I mentioned before, even within algebra, there's an aspect of modeling that's critical and important for them to understand the algebra as well as the other mathematical concepts within. Similarly, you have functions here, and again, there are pieces of it that we pull out and we understand, how do we create real-life contextualization and conceptualization for our students so that when they're working through this, they understand, again, not just the specific calculation of an equation or a formula, but what it really relates to. Similarly, we do the same things in geometry and we do the same things in statistics and probability. Again, for me, this is about teaching to big ideas and perspective. We've been talking at the school about deep understanding, and I said that would be one of those shifts that would keep coming back to. And I think that that's really one of the most important messages that we can deliver about the mathematics instruction and how the Common Core starts to create a shift for us. So we bring this slide back up because really it's the entry point into providing examples for tonight. So for us, algebra becomes a main focal point, some of it for obvious reasons because of the shift in the reasons examined, the anticipation this year, but obviously also just to be able to talk about the progression and how we can take our students through this progression of integration of Common Core at the high school level. So what we have now is a sample activity and a few different sample activities that we'll talk about. This is a, this is an activity that the teacher has provided to the students where, again, you could see that they're either working independently or with a partner. One of the key things that jumped out for me is the very next sentence in the second paragraph. "The objective is to develop a compound locus problem for me to solve." So in this case, students are being asked to create the problem that the teacher has to solve. It's a very different approach. For students to be able to create a locus problem, they have to understand the concept of what it means to have a locus. And then they clearly need to understand how to solve the problem if they're going to create the problem. So it's a very different approach. And if you had a chance to read down below, it starts to talk about how the students can actually use the school building in their locus problem and they would get extra credit if they did that. So it's a way for them even to expand their meaning and create it right to their own world rather than a drawing or a diagram. What this slide shows now is also working with locus problems. And it starts to show a little bit of the juxtaposition, but also the integrated approach that we're looking to have. On the left is probably a little bit more of a typical and a more traditional way that a teacher would ask problems in this unit with the X-Y coordinate axes and students are plotting points and it sort of scaffolds, they even takes them through a process. Still important and certainly nothing that we're moving away from, but really what this is about is how do we enhance that and add to it? And again, the idea of teaching to this deeper understanding and conceptualization. And that's where we see the problem on the right here. And what the diagrams on the right and the wording starts to express here is that students are given some information. It so happens that there is a backyard and the backyard has a tree and a stump and a tent. And they're given some information about distances between them and they find out that there's a treasure buried in the backyard. And the idea is to identify where would be the appropriate points of where that treasure might be buried. So again, totally different than just plotting points on an X-Y axis and certainly just getting a right answer. Here, students are really able to understand conceptually what it means to have a locus of points and why it might be used in the real world. This is another example, again, using graphing, but a little higher-order thinking and a little bit more advanced concept. This is when we start to shift to quadratic expressions and quadratic equations. And when we're dealing with quadratic equations, one of the important things to be able to determine is how many solutions there may be to these types of problems. So at the top of this, this is actual student work that was done this year, and this work comes from the Common Core examples specifically in Math Module Four. And what the top four examples start to show is by merely looking at a graph, students are now able to understand, A, how many roots, and B, why, or something called the discriminant, which starts to become very technical information and knowledge. So here on the top, they're just pulling it out from just seeing a graph, they're not even seeing the equation. Down below, what you're seeing then in the next step is, in addition to performing a similar step during the four graphs that are listed in the bottom sequence where they have to identify whether there's zero, negative, or positive roots, they're then given very brief information about what is called the discriminant. And these are just coefficients from the broader equation that makes up these graphs. And what they have to do is just from that partial information, they have to compare it and match it to which is the appropriate graph it aligns to. It's a very advanced concept. And when they start to do this and they start to have to do this in sort of what almost could be looked at as piecemeal, they don't have all the information, they need to fill those gaps in their mind. And the only way they can do that is if they were given and taught to the conceptual understanding of this. So the last two slides that I'm going to take you through show just yet another layer of this and how it progresses. So here what we're seeing is a similar way for the students to explore quadratic formulas and expressions and this concept of discriminant. So here they're asked to write an equation that has one real solution. Again, similar to the locus problem, the students are the ones creating the problem. So they're given a set of parameters and they need to understand the concepts that go into this to create it. And what you can see from the student work is kind of an unpacking of their thinking. And they didn't just do a guess and check and keep trying to create formulas until it matched what the requirement was. They were able to, in their description here and in the mathematics, show why and how they were going to be able to create the equation that they did. At the bottom level, it advances to then creating an equation that has two real solutions. So again, one step beyond. And then in the next slide, we'll see that we get to a whole nother layer of concept in math, which is imaginary numbers. So here they had to create a quadratic equation that has two imaginary solutions. So again, rather than just simply putting an equation here, what the students are doing is unpacking their thinking and they're actually explaining. And then in two, the question says, "Briefly explain or summarize how you arrived at your answer." And this really is where the rubber hits the road with some of the difference in Common Core and the mathematics. And it's that ability for students not only to demonstrate the conceptual understanding, but now also in writing or verbally, they would have to express it. So this, and by the way, in the previous slide, those two examples also had the same question where they had to explain, but for sake of time, we didn't want to take you through all of those detailed answers of the students. But because really in this slide is where it shows how it comes together at the highest So these are the mathematical practices, there are eight of them, that are also provided by the Common Core. And what I found really interesting when I went through these eight is that at least six of them directly apply to the previous problem. So if I can ask Reina just to take us back, in this problem, and I'm going to read off the mathematical practices that apply, number one is "Make sense of problems and persevere in solving them." So students are doing just that. They are certainly making sense when they're being asked to create the problem and then explain their thinking down below of how they did that. They have to reason abstractly and quantitatively, which is number two. And again, they're doing both sides of it. They're reasoning abstractly, they're putting their thinking down on paper, but quantitatively by also showing how the math and the numbers support their thinking. Number three talks about constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others. So they're creating an argument just by creating that equation and then they're defending it when they're explaining their reasoning behind it. I'm then going to jump down to mathematical practice six, "Attend to precision." Again, as I highlighted in some of the previous slides, there were very fine and small distinctions in between each of the different graphs and the students certainly needed to attend to precision in order to solve that, and that really translates into this example as well. And then "Look for and make use of structure." Again, the students need to start to understand what in their structure of how they're creating their equations substantiates their answers. And finally, number eight in mathematical practice speaks to "Look for and express regularity in repeated reasoning." Anyone who teaches math will tell you that a lot of it is about getting students to identify patterns. Well, again, here, what we took you through is a progression of student work where it's all about students being able to recognize key and important patterns. And without that recognition, there was no way for them to be able to come to correct conclusions and create their own equations. So in just a few brief examples, we're able to show you how the mathematical practices are being addressed at the high school level.
Okay, so we have made our way, I believe, through 54 slides, 52 slides, as quickly as possible, but we hope that you actually got a window into some of the work that's happening and how this progression at the high school has been building or will build from the elementary to the middle to the high school. One of the things I just wanted to point out is as Deb talked about, a lot of the close reading, we know, or some of us know, that the feedback that we've actually gotten from our graduating seniors is that when they get to college, one of the things that they are not prepared for is the level of reading. And we have really been talking about that and thinking about that and trying to figure out what, how do we move so that we are giving kids the level of experience? And the reality is, when they get to college, they're reading, unless they, in their English courses and their English majors, they are reading a ton of informational text, a ton. And we've shared with you the slide about the proportion at high school is 70/30, keeping in mind that it's not that the English classroom is 70% informational, 30% literature, the students' experience over the course of the day, over the course of the year. So what Deb shared tonight and what you also saw in the middle school presentation was that a ton of that informational text reading is coming through the content areas, as it should. And that's really what's going to help our students and our children be more prepared as they move forward. The other piece that I just wanted to highlight that Dave spoke about was that modeling. If you saw the elementary presentation, you saw, we gave our example of the bar modeling. So this idea starts very early, the idea of creating pictures and images and telling the story through images other than numbers and creating those models and those mental models is really important, starting as early as kindergarten. So tonight, our final slide talks about next steps. And if you happen to have memorized the final slide from the middle school presentation, then you in fact would know it really is the same slide. And that's not surprising. Our work really at the secondary level continues while we certainly have a jump up at the middle school and as I remind you- middle school, and as I remind you, those assessments had started previously, which definitely was a driving force. Our work at the high school is really very similar. We have, we have some units of study underway, but we have a lot of work to do in our English department, most definitely. We have to rethink what we're doing and how we're doing it. I will say, actually, in the last couple of weeks, I've connected with many people in other districts and our neighboring districts who sit in my seat in their districts. And I will share that we're not so different than where other districts are at the high school level for implementing the Common Core. The push came this year with that algebra regions for sure, and I think all of a sudden everyone realized, I think this is really going to happen at the high school. And traditionally, high schools are not, have not been that affected by these sort of significant changes at the state level. So we are going to continue to look at our English program, what we're offering, how are we aligned, how are we aligned with Common Core, as well as some of the other issues that we've talked about over the last year or so. Math, the same thing, we'll start to look at our other courses and where we want to make sure we're integrating Common Core. One of the things that we want to make sure is that we're providing that common language. Kids should not have to figure out each teacher's language and what they're saying. It's a huge advantage to walk in and have a teacher using the same language as the teacher the year before, calling things and naming things the same thing. Otherwise, kids don't always realize that a teacher is actually talking about the same concept. In science, we will be challenged. It does look like the next generation science standards will probably be adopted. As we had previously talked about, the next generation science standards also align with the Common Core, but that will definitely be the work of the Science Department. And with social studies, the new social studies framework has been put out there, and we will continue to align certainly our informational text, reading and writing is at the core of our social studies program. So we definitely have work to do. We have a very committed staff, as you know, and we have teachers who are ready to do this work, and we've begun and we will continue. So with that, we say thank you.
Thank you all for a very informative and fact-filled discussion, short discussion. I guess at this point, I'd like to start with any comments, questions that the board has, and then we'll move to anything that the community has as part of six point one.
I'll start it off.
Sure.
Thank you. This was a great presentation, a lot heavier, more information. I have to be honest, when I was reading this prior to the meeting, this was a lot more to digest than the other ones, and a lot of it, I had a lot of questions, and I just knew it would all come together for me once you presented it. So thank you. A little clarification regarding the algebra regions. It's not new that we're having the algebra regions, it's just that they changed the content, some of the content area, is that what, right?
So this is the first year for the Common Core Algebra Regions. So the old regions is still out there for this year, and the Common Core Regions is new. So in other words, the expectation that we are teaching to the Common Core curriculum in anticipation of students taking that regions is new.
And it's my understanding that the curriculum is slightly different than prior years, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. The next generation science standards, do you think they're going to be adopted for, implement for next year?
Is that loud enough? I am afraid, do I think yes? I do. I think they're going to, I think they're going to adopt them. And I think that maybe they'll do a little bit of a soft rollout, but I don't think we'll have a ton of time. I mean, we actually have been looking at them. They have been out there, so people have had the exposure, but our curriculum is not realigned to them. You know, it's hard to say with New York State how much time they're going to give us before they ultimately change the assessment. And that's, and that's very difficult for teachers. When you have a curriculum to teach and the assessment doesn't align with the curriculum, that is very complicated. So quite honestly, at this point, it would be better if they would write the new assessments, because then we would know where we're going. So right now, we're teetering. My guess would be they will.
Okay. And my final question, you could use ELA as an example, I think math might be an easier way to explain. And looking at these slides, specifically the math problem, how does that look for a Regents-level class versus an honors class? How does, how does an honors class get more in-depth into like, you know, algebra, for example, as opposed to a Regents-level?
So, you know, there's two levels of that. In a, in a base Regents-level class, a teacher is always going to have to feel the pulse of, in any class, feel the pulse of the room and understand the readiness factors for students to progress. So the idea isn't to cover curriculum, the idea is to work with students to make sure that they understand and can be successful with it. Well, that may require teachers, quite frankly, sometimes to spend more time or less time on certain topics, and they make strategic decisions about that. So in a core Regents class, they may not be able to take it even deeper and provide more examples that may take it to a richer and broader level. When we're talking about our honors classes, we're also really thinking of the progression of how it builds eventually to calculus and our highest order, orders of math that we offer here in Irvington. So what the teachers in the honors classes will do is they will add even harder problems to that, and they will go even deeper. So they will teach to a standard in some cases that's even higher than the Regents exam. It's a little tricky at this point in time, because while we certainly have a framework and an understanding of the Common Core standards, we haven't really seen significant amounts of examples of what the assessment's going to look at. I know you asked the question before, Maria, also about, there is a shift in topics for the curriculum of algebra, but it's really about how the questions are going to be asked and how deep the students have to go within that. And there's still some confusion, because the unknown is that we haven't seen a sample exam yet. So to bring it back to your question, at the honors level, we know that we are beyond the minimum standards of what's going to be asked on the Regents, and we're able to go even deeper and even start to create the pathway towards the next level of honor courses each step along the way, so that it builds towards ultimately the highest levels of math that we have.
Thank you.
I'm happy to go last if there's others.
I'll go, I have a few. Just for clarification for me on the algebra regions then, so there are going to be two regions, and did we decide which direction we're going to go with that?
Yes, so we actually have been going back and forth about trying to make a good decision on this. It's complicated, and I feel like, and actually just last week, on Friday, we actually sat down and had the conversation yet one more time, and we have decided that we're going to give both. I know, I'm not sure if that memo went out yet, but Dave I know is going to be letting parents know that. It was, I'll just take a second to talk about the why and the how. So the way that New York State has designed it for this year is if you give both regions, you will count the score, the highest score for each student, whichever score is the highest score. We really felt that what Dave just said is really true. We don't know what the assessments are going to look like. While there is a difference in the Common Core curriculum, we're not sure how the assessment will look different from the, from the other regions. And we felt that it was better to provide, offer both assessments for this year. This will be the last year supposedly that we will be able to do that. And we felt that that was really the right thing to do for kids, to give kids the option.
Is, I'm sorry, John.
It's not really the option.
Because the other side of the coin is, you just said what the benefit was, which is they get the highest, the highest score. What is the balance of the negative?
I, I think.
Other than having another test?
I was just going to say, I think, I think that's the negative. I think that when people say like, you know, you know, there's a lot of conversation about overtesting kids and over assessing. So I feel like, you know, some parents may feel like, you know, I don't know, do I really want my child sitting for two assessments? And I think what we're going to say is, and it's funny, because I had seen a parent, and I asked them, just off the cuff, what would you say if we said we were going to, you know, give, and they said, you know, if it's the right thing to do and if it's the right thing for kids, then that is what we should do. And I think that's the bottom line. That's really.
But the kids have to take both tests?
They would sit for both.
And is this like two different tests during the final schedule?
It's June, so the June 3rd is the math assessment, the new math assessment, the Common Core Algebra Regions, and June 23rd, 24th.
Okay, so everyone across the state, if they opt in.
Yes.
June 3rd is taking the Common Core assessment.
And I will say at this point, I don't know many districts in our area who are, who are only giving one.
And just to clarify what you said, just to clarify what you said, Maria, everyone in the state has to give all ninth graders the Common Core on June 3rd. So the June 3rd exam is the mandate. The option was whether we also wanted to give the old version.
Thank you.
For our current ninth graders. So the old version gives them the option of being able to at least experience what we already know and are used to as the current framework of the old algebra exam.
And their scores would possibly be better?
Their scores could likely be better. Again, it really speaks to the unknown. And the unknown, while we know the content that leads into the new Common Core Regions, we don't know the style of questions, we don't know the depth, and obviously, while we're teaching to it, it raises some unknowns and some concerns. So we do look at the old algebra regions as a fallback option. And while our current ninth graders may not be exposed to every aspect of that, we will have a short window of time to do some further test prep and some practice exams leading to the older version of the exam as well.
So how does that play in with the accelerated eighth graders take the Regents? Do they also take the ninth grade? I'm confused.
The eighth grade.
What happens to the eighth grade now?
So everybody was confused until about two weeks ago. So, I mean, and this is, I mean, it really is the way New York State does business. So we go into, and you go into the year, and that's what we're saying, so wait a minute, if we give the old Regents and we have to give the new Regents and the eighth graders are going to take the eighth grade math assessment, really? Well, New York State got a ton of feedback on that. So now you're asking us to assess our kids three times, April, beginning of June, end of June. And they just, they applied to, it's a federal, because it's part of ultimately what was NCLB. So they had to get a federal waiver to not, so that we didn't have to give the eighth grade assessment. So two weeks ago maybe, we got the memo saying that New York State has received the waiver, and we now do not have to give the eighth grade assessment to our accelerated students who are taking the algebra.
They'll take the ninth grade assessment.
And the Regents. Yes.
Well, okay.
Just going to clarify that.
So confusing. Okay, I'm going to change, are you done or no?
Yeah.
I have one more question, different, slightly different topic is, and just hearing about all of these changes and how the Common Core is impacting instruction, I guess my question is really, seems like it fundamentally is changing the teaching side of it. And, you know, we've talked about professional development, and we hear, you know, about how fast it's rolling out, but I guess I just would be curious practically for you to address that in terms of, you know, you know, where do you think we are in that spectrum? Are we on target? Are we, you know, ahead? And how do you think the teachers are handling it? Because it's clearly, they've got to get through everything they always have to get through, and they have to get through it in a new way now. So I don't know how that's impacting them.
So we started the professional, some of the work more, and I wouldn't call it the professional development work, I would call it the work of trying to examine our curriculum and understand where we are with the Common Core in relationship to what we were currently doing. This year, we have been working with the English department on a regular basis to try and work through some of those, some of the discrepancies. Our English, almost all of our either ninth or 10th grade English teachers have attended workshops on the Common Core, different workshops, close reading, as well as trying to understand the new Common Core assessment. So let me just clarify, the Common Core English assessment, should this, should things go through as, as they were supposed to, would be not, our current ninth graders will be the first group of students to take the English Common Core assessment, the new English Regions in essence.
In ninth grade?
No, not in ninth grade. So the current ninth graders, when they get into either 10th or 11th grade, depending on when we decide to give it, this is the group of students who will be assessed using the new Common Core assessment. So I would say from a professional development, I would, the same thing for math, all of our math teachers have been to Common Core workshops. Both of our chairs, our English chair and our math chair have participated in many Common Core workshops. We have brought people in who have presented on the Common Core. And at this point, we're actually, we're going to be bringing someone in to do more of like a coaching, one-on-one, small group model for, certainly for English at this point.
And one add on to that, Robin, is as Deb and I are actually now going around and doing our observations and going through those cycles, we're starting to infuse more language in our dialogue with teachers also specific to Common Core, not just in math and ELA, but really across the curriculum and the subject areas as well.
One more, just a quick question, since we talked about the English. Do you view it as somewhere down the pike in lieu of Regents, there are now going to be Common Core tests? I mean, is this kind of the beginning and the end of Regents or no?
They are, they still call them the Regents. It's the Common Core Algebra Regions. They just put the words Common Core.
But I mean, English and then social studies maybe, but I don't know, science, I mean, I don't know.
You mean not having New York State-specific tests?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's quite a political machine. So it's really hard to say where they're going to go with that.
Okay. So right now, we're kind of assuming the Regents are here until we hear otherwise.
Absolutely.
Done, okay, I'm done.
Thank you. I just have one question. How does this impact students who have not learned Common Core? And I can see it with my own girls who are in fourth grade and sixth grade, they're kind of picking it up, and it seems like that's the way they're thinking and learning now, because they're younger and they didn't have such a significant foundation of other practices. It must be very difficult for juniors, especially like, let's say in trig, what would be advanced algebra. How do they sort of embrace what you shared with us tonight?
So that, so I'm glad you asked that question, because I can clarify. So our students who are really being instructed through a Common Core curriculum and lens are really our ninth and 10th grade, you saw some nice 10th grade examples. We, while we have looked at the Common Core, the higher level courses, we really are working through a progression, because what we need to make sure is that we're, we still have the curriculum we've been teaching. So really, this current ninth grade was seen as the group who were going to come in and they will be Common Core-aligned, just like us.
Right, and so 10th grade, a little bit more, but not as much as ninth grade, and then 11th grade, very little, if any, and right, okay.
So you'll see the progression now.
That makes sense. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Also, very interesting. How do you, this is a personal reflection, I just have, I find it harder to kind of follow and track what's going on in the English and the ELA than it is in the math, partly because math is so easy to lay out, and here's what you're doing and everything. But that's not a reflection on your presentation, it's just, it seems like it's harder to, harder to follow, you know, what we're doing that's different than what we were doing before. Maybe it's just hard to define that in easy terms. How do you distinguish, how do you think about the, just the sort of standard, and this kind of relates to our whole Common Core effort, I guess, but it really, you know, rubber meets the road at the end of the road in high school. How do you think about the, the standards we want our kids to graduate with as Common Core? It's clearly not the stand, we're obviously hoping that a good chunk of our students are going to exceed those standards in various areas before they graduate, right? Through APs or whatever we want to do, and not BAPs. But how do you, how do you sort of, kind of align the idea of Common Core with the idea that for many of our students, what passes for the national baseline minimum college and career readiness is not what we want Irvington to produce in terms of college readiness for the kind of colleges where we want our kids to be able to go to, for many of them? How do we, how do you kind of align those sort of two disparate ideas of standards?
I'm not so sure they're so different in the sense that, I think that... I'm not so sure they're so different in the sense that, I think that what we've seen over these three presentations is the design of the Common Core is about naming things and naming them explicitly. And what it does is it opens the door for depth of learning. So I think all it does is open the door for both, all levels of learners. And so it gives us a way to actually go deeper. And so if kids are coming into 11th grade with a stronger foundation, then I only see that our 11th and 12th grade in our AP courses, I only see it opening a door for our kids to be even more successful than they are. And the reality is, all of our kids are giving us, not all, at all levels, the kids are giving us the feedback when they get to college about not having the reading and not having the background. So even our students who are working at those higher levels, we still need to be doing a better job of preparing them for the rigor. And so for me, that's where I see the rubber hitting the road. I feel like what it's going to do is open the door for us to create more rigorous learning environments and ultimately being able to meet kids wherever they are and move kids along.
I also think like there's a distinction between the how kids are doing it, and a lot of the Common Core seems to me is about how, you know, improving your thinking skills, your learning skills, your reading skills, your writing skills. But there's also the sort of whole domain of knowledge base, right? That's kind of different. It's not really addressed by what you're doing so much, maybe a little in math, but there's the knowledge of different sorts of literature. For example, there's a broad range of knowledge in math, and then there's obviously history and foreign language and science. But that's a whole different area, is that where we differentiate?
Well, I don't know that it's necessarily about differentiate at that level, John, but I think, I think your question, your points are good ones. And, and I think, you know, what we're really talking about is, and, you know, you talked about the hows of learning. You know, the Common Core is very much about getting students to think deeply and to be very metacognitive about their learning process, so that they can really control their learning at much deeper levels. But that's just the core of learning and how to learn. What we now can look at then at the high school level is what the learning opportunities are from a comprehensive standpoint. So, you know, in some ways, I think your question is also tying back to the district's theories of action and the goals around 21st century learning, and our opportunities to make sure that we're providing those opportunities for our students. So whether it's looking at the levels of technology courses that we offer, and whether there's opportunities to bring more into the high school, even in courses that we currently offer, I think of our architecture and engineering programs, which is an amazing program that we offer here. But as we advance through the Common Core, there may be ways for our students to even further demonstrate their thinking and their learning within even those classes. So I think that it's both. It has a way to elevate the current courses that we offer, even the ones that aren't immediately thought of as Common Core versions of curriculum. But I also think then the way that we best prepare our students is to be looking at the specific courses that we offer and making sure that we're staying current and giving our students rich experiences to compete in this world.
Which is a separate.
Separate and related, yes.
That's right, yeah, okay. I think that's it, thanks.
Thank you very much. I guess now I'd like to move to 6.1 and turn it over to the community for any thoughts that the community has, or questions on this presentation, and anything else that's on the agenda. I guess if you'd start with anything you have on the presentation. And there are some newer faces we're happy to see, so we would like you to limit your comments to three minutes, and to the extent we can answer your question quickly, we will do so. If not, we will take your question and report back. If you can say your name and where you live, that'd be great.
Hi, Sharon Hammer, and I live in Irvington, and I'm shorter than this. Just one quick question. With regard to our current 11th graders and 12th graders and English standards, and what you're hearing from graduating seniors who are coming back in, my hunch is you're not just hearing about the level of reading, I'm thinking you're also hearing about the level of writing. And since you're talking about the Common Core standards coming in and the way this is going to continue and progress, starting with your current ninth grade, I have a lot of concerns as an 11th grade parent, what's going to happen for our current 11th graders and 12th graders? What are we doing to advance the ball and prepare them? Even kids who are in higher level classes, I think there are concerns about the level, as you said, even kids who are taking AP and honors classes, which I'm sure that the high school seniors, graduating seniors who you surveyed coming back, were among those students and really feel in a deficit. What are we doing to address that? Both in terms of writing and language skills and reading skills, and also the type of reading they've been doing, not just in terms of workload, but the quality of literature? What is it that, what are we doing to raise those standards so these kids graduate a year from now, or this year, more prepared than the last year's class?
So Sharon, I guess, a couple of things I want to comment on that. Number one, the question that was asked about the math, math is a little bit different. There is no question, what we're doing with Common Core, what we're doing across all grades with English, and we are looking at all courses, we are even looking at our AP course. We are looking at making sure that there's standards, and that while those standards, maybe those honors may be considered for some people minimum standards, there's rigor behind them, and we're looking at that for ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade in English. So that's across the board.
And that also goes to the writing issues as well as the?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the community on either the presentation or the topics that appear on the agenda that we're moving to? Understanding that there is a budget presentation, and we'll be happy to take some questions from the community then. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move to the consent agenda. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Sorry to move along quickly, but we've got a lot to go. Is there anything before I call for a motion to accept the consent agenda that the board wants to pull out? Before I do so, I do want to thank again the PTSA, who, again, is nice enough to continually donate to our children. Okay, can I get a motion? And the consent agenda for those new to this process, it's all of the items in Article 8, 9, 10, and 11 of the agenda this evening, which are our business items. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
Yes.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you very much, and thanks again to the PTSA. Moving ahead, I'd like to now turn the microphone back to Dr. Harrison for Section 12.1, which is our proposed 2014-15 school calendar.
So one of the tasks that all school leaders are charged with is attempting to develop a school calendar that takes into consideration many, many factors. And not only do we have requirements per SED to meet 180 days, we have to be considerate of what we offer, our vacation times and breaks, so as not to have impacts with testing. Oftentimes, a spring break is a challenge for that scheduling because of the three-to-eight testing that occurs. We have to be mindful of contractual obligations that exist, federal and religious holidays that impact not only our communities, but of course, our employees. And then we also think about consistency with BOSIs in our neighboring districts, because there's layers of shared services that exist. And when we think about BOSIs, certainly, it's a lot easier to align our programs, whether it's services that are pushed into our schools, BOSIs programs that are run in our schools that would operate in conjunction with our calendar. So if we don't align, oftentimes, there's complications, where we can have folks in our community that may not see vacations, some of their children may be at their schools from BOSIs programs. We also are considerate of athletics. When we think about athletics, if we were to have a different spring break than another part of the community, well then all of a sudden, we'd have one week where we wouldn't be able to schedule events, and another week that would be on the flip side, where they wouldn't be able to play us. So we would have impacts that would be really negative on the quantity of competitions we'd be able to have for our student athletes, but also looking at really the complexity to squeeze all that in a short period of time, where it is, and it would have negative impacts on academics. So we continue to try to find ways to improve our calendar, to try to find ways to really benefit with how we align our superintendent's conference days, where we place them in the school year, to establish a plan to manage snow days. I tell you, last year, we started off the year with hurricane days, if you recall. And fortunately, I've only had a couple of snow days, and we made some modifications midstream as a district that have worked out for us. This year, we made some modifications, we built in more snow days than had been in the past, and I think we're fortunate, because we have yet another storm headed this way. We continue to focus on the early release days. At one point in time, we had four early release days at the end of the week, the last week in the year. We also look at the number of those days being single-hour days. So we've reduced the number of days, and we've made them full early release days, so there's a longer period of instruction. And we've eliminated some early release days around holidays when possible. So with that said, I highlight a calendar that I've generated for consideration for public discussion for this year, for this coming school year. And I recognize that this visual is a little small to read from where you are. But what we're looking at, we're bringing our teachers back, faculty and most staff, in September. This is, I'm sorry, August is the idea. And here, we're trying to really maximize the opportunity to engage our teachers. I recognize a lot of our staff will come in and do extra time during the summer, because they are preparing their classrooms, collaborating with colleagues. But those two days, when you're in August versus September, have a totally different deal. We're not rushing the next day for children to arrive, we're giving folks opportunities to collaborate, and it really creates a different framework around the focus. We also, by doing that, we're able to bring our students in even sooner in September, which is helpful when we think of us students that are standardized tests, we think of us students that are sitting for APs, it's additional days of instruction that you can get in before those assessments. You can see clearly where we identify holidays that are taken, whether Rosh Hashanah, Labor Day is the calendar, looking at Veterans Day falls on the 11th, and then looking at superintendent's conference days, superintendent's conference day that appears in October. November holidays are pretty traditional with where they fall. The one unique thing that kind of fell with this year's calendar and was a trend throughout our region of the state, was looking at the holiday recess, December into January, and we really had to struggle having to stretch the school year to be able to hit the ratings day in the end of June, which is complex, and we understand why it's there. But we have to stretch our calendar to be able to hit those days. And in doing so, we have the opportunity once again to take a two-week-long holiday recess. As we move through the year, schedule's very consistent in this year, looking at a winter break comparable period of time. What I think is important to highlight is looking at the March. That superintendent's conference day that we've identified on March 13th, it just didn't happen to be a day that looked nice for us. Certainly, when we have a superintendent's conference day wherever possible, we want to try to attach it to a weekend to make the situation maybe a little more manageable for some families. But we've aligned that day with other school districts in the area. So our objective here is that if we're able to align our conference days, it gives us the opportunity for collaboration in our professional development, and maybe we can spread our resources a little further, collaborate on the types of experiences that we provide for our faculty and staff. So we believe there's a lot of advantages to that calendar. So we followed a March, looking at the spring break that would fall comparable to this year's, a long weekend for Memorial Day, you can see closing with the last day of students on the 20th day.
Can I ask one question? I guess we're almost, did you have any more comments before questions? Only because this was a topic of discussion on the train this morning, I was, I ride with some gentlemen that live in a school district immediately to our south that'll go unnamed, and they were actually talking about the fact that, you know, we have two days left from the days, our snow days, I believe, and they only have one, and they felt that we planned better. Now, the five built-in snow days, not having the old, is that the same amount of snow days that we built in for this year?
Yep.
Okay, same amount.
Good foresight, a lot flashed here, and hopefully it'll pan out in similar fashion this year. So we look at the built-in snow days, as we said, there's, the state requires 180 school days. We can see our calendar consists of 181 student days, but you're able to apply four, up to four superintendent conference days to meet that 180. So when you add the 181, and you consider that maximum of four, brings us to 185. So we therefore have budgeted five snow days. If we were to have an overage, like this year, if we establish a plan, and depending how they fell, we would look at, I propose that we look at reducing April 6th as the first day, and then the 23rd is the days that would be the give-back days for makeups. And I would hope that we have the fortune not to ever have to go beyond seven, so.
No, absolutely.
So certainly, any comment and discussion other than Mr. Greidos is, I just welcome. Per regulation, we have to post the calendar for a period of time, 30 days, and then we look to adopt it in March. So any comments?
Anything from the board?
I just want to make one comment for parents of younger kids, because I know this comes up a lot, a lot of parents say, well, why are we here so late, and why can't school land earlier? And I just, and if you can add to this, but I know that it's, New York State Regents are given very late in June, and then the teachers contractionally need time to grade the tests. So it's just, if you live in New York State, it's really just not possible to end school earlier in June, and, you know, take a week somewhere else. So I just, again, just to address, it comes up all the time, and I think for younger parents, it's helpful to understand that.
Don't you get two weeks off for Christmas?
Yeah.
The last day of school is actually stipulated by the commissioner, right? June 25th?
Is that, what does rating day mean? Is that?
Certainly, someone who taught history with New York State, and I was going to put the thought in.
Hint, hint, freedom.
It's the opportunity that we're supposed to be able to have a day for teachers to be able to score in the assessments.
And that's fixed by state laws, the, it has to be our last day of school?
Yeah. You can, you can actually.
You have a day after.
Other flexibilities that could extend faculty a year beyond that if you wanted to, but certainly, it would challenge the game.
I mean, I'm not suggesting it. You know, it's late from the standpoint of kids, summer obligations, especially if they're involved in things in other states, you know, trying to say.
And when you look at the cycle of how the calendar can go, and only being so many scenarios for us to consider, we work through this cycle now, where we're, that opportunity, depending on where Labor Day falls in the year and so on, it impacts where things fall back into the vacation phase.
Could you also just explain what, explain a little bit about early release days and what, are they mandated somehow, or are they, why do we have early release days, and what purpose do they play?
Why we have that? Well, I think if we look to the day before Thanksgiving, we're looking at typical travel plans that exist for individual convenience, say, but when we look to really, I guess, the point of the focus is the end of the school year, and looking at the volume of work that's associated with teachers having to perform assessments to grade student work. You know, one of the, and this is one of the conversations that I think we were engaged in last year, and there was a bit of learning forming, but it was unique that I think it tied to looking at the timing of APPR implementation, and looking at year-end assessments that are a part of APPR plans, and that teachers have the realistic responsibility of being able to have it to grade the variety of assessments, and then inform APPR scores, and of course, student work. Complications in how those assessments are performed, certain situations, teachers can't grade their own students' papers. So we need to have a cadre of teachers available to be able to collaborate in that context. But we've worked to, to make the days more meaningful, we've eliminated one day, and we've gone from the one-hour days to the traditional early release days.
And is there a limit by laws how many of those days we can have, or is it really, do they count the same as a regular day from an instructional point of view?
Quite honestly, no.
We could do them all.
Yes.
The one thing that's really interesting, if you look at all the mandates and requirements that are pressed upon us by all of them, the one thing shockingly that doesn't exist is a minimum hour, minimum hours for a day. Most states have requirements where you have to have, say, four, four and a half hours per school day. No such requirement exists in New York State.
Is there any, oh, I'm sorry.
Two cool questions. At the bottom, the two dates that you list that you would take back if we needed them for snow days, this year, you use the superintendent's day in March as one of the options. This year, you use the superintendent's day in March as one of the options. You listed, I believe, three different options this year, but you remove that as an option. Is that because you want to really keep that day because you've coordinated with the other villages?
We want the day, we need the day with our teachers.
Okay.
And, and we have a commitment to that, that professional development. We have such initiative in and around curriculum writing and documentation that we can't sacrifice that amount of time. So if I had to establish a priority, if we had, had a situation where we had, you know, six snow days by January, we'd have to rethink the plan and I would come in with a proposal next year that may include addressing that. But at this point in time, if I had to make a decision, I want to protect and preserve that time with our teachers.
Thanks.
I thought that was the answer. I just wanted to make that clear. Just a suggestion as posting this, parents looking at this, that last week is different than years prior. You've cut it by one day, which that you easily can see. But the fact that the last three days are pure half-days and it's not an hour is different than years past. And I don't know if maybe somehow you could list the hours?
We have on the bottom left-hand side, early dismissal, early release times, the box on the left. If we look.
All right, yeah, I, yeah, I see that. But most people are accustomed to that last day being an hour. But, okay.
Elaine, can we make note of that? Maybe we can find a way to highlight that a little bit. Just make note that even if we just had a sentence.
Yeah, an asterisk or something.
Even if you said, you know, June 23rd to the 25th, the.
For half-days and stuff.
All, all, all early release days, including 23rd, 24th.
Right.
Are release date in reference to the calendar.
Yeah.
Good idea.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Here, we good?
Yep, thank you.
Is there anyone in the community who wants to talk about the calendar? All righty. So we'll, this will be part of, we're going to adopt this at the next meeting or in March?
No, two meetings. We have to let it sit for 30 days.
Okay, thank you very much. Going on to our next discussion, which is the consideration of granting tax exemptions to veterans who reside within the Irvington School District. And just so everyone knows, you know, we're required to have a public meeting regarding this topic. So this is really sort of a first blush for the board and no decision will be made tonight. And I have some personal thoughts as to why I think that that's good. Because I think we need the community to weigh in, but I don't want to steal all of Dr. Harrison's thunder from the presentation.
Not a lot of thunder to be stolen. But quite honestly, we certainly all value the contributions and the work of all of our veterans and those that provide service to our country, to our state, and of course, those here locally. But when we look at where we are, we are faced with a decision. If we go back to December, a bill was signed into law which authorizes certain tax exemptions from school taxes, taxes for eligible veterans. Income is not a part of this criteria. And it looks at a percentage of the total assessed value of a residence. You'll see different dates that, that are a little conflicting. Some things that you may read, say, June 1st, some say March 1st. The, what's written into law is, is by June 1st. But locally, there are deadlines that are established. So for us, Greenberg wants to see a decision made by May 1st so they can meet the June 1st deadline for the state of New York. So the board needs to have conversation in and around this subject. We should have a public hearing on this, which we will advertise the date in March and have a hearing at the beginning of the meeting where certainly, we will advertise the purpose of the meeting and invite members of the public to come and contribute to the dialogue. In Irvington, we have approximately 182 veterans who are eligible for this exemption. This is an estimated tax impact. This is utilizing information that Ms. Miller has collected from the tax office to recognize the impact that this could have. Again, the adjustments shift for 182 people and we can see as a result of the shifts in their taxes and the redistribution of the balance of the tax base, you can see the impacts. So if you were to look at the average home in the community within the quarters of the Irvington School District, folks would see an increase of $79 in their tax. And you can see the scenarios that Beverly demonstrated for her house at a quarter million dollars, half a million and a million, and contemplate the estimated impact on your individual properties.
Can I, I'd like to start us out on this one if you don't mind. I do want to hear and I want to thank the board. We've all been great tonight in streamlining discussion and I don't want to posture, you know, make too much of a, a big deal out of this. But to me, this is a cop-out by the, the New York State government. And what I mean by that is, is that it's placing upon a school board a decision to grant or not grant certain of your neighbors a tax exemption. And for people that don't play a lot with taxes and budgets, this isn't a question of just giving veterans a tax exemption, which in anybody's, in anybody's mind, sounds great. What it is, is it's saying that veterans will pay less taxes and those that are not veterans will pay more taxes, right? Our, our levy doesn't change. We're still going to ask the community for $55 million. The question just is, is whether we as a board want to vote that veterans, because of this legislation, will pay less of that. So I feel personally it's a cop-out. The state could have done this and made this legislation without putting it on individual school districts throughout New York State to pit neighbor against neighbor on an important issue like veterans affairs. So I'm sorry for my political comment, but I, I, I believe that that's what this is. You know, the reason I think that neighbors, and I know some people have started to reach out to us by email in support of this, I, I think this is just a clear community decision. And I know we're forced with making a decision, frankly. And we don't have a lot of time to make a decision and it's kind of tough to poll everybody like anything. But, but it's something that I would definitely like to hear from people in the community. I, I have a gut feeling on where Irvington would come out with, you know, over 6,000 people and this affecting 183 of our neighbors and how, how we value, I think, as a community what veterans have done and continue, have done for this country, they're veterans. But I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to ask people to weigh in on this, please, because I do think it's a tough thing for five volunteers, a decision for five volunteers to make. So I, I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts. If, whatever, however you'd like to do it. Or if you have any thoughts yet, I guess it's, it's sort of a thing of first impression, right?
Well, I'll start it off. I've been reading up on this and seeing what have other communities are handling. I think it's kind of wrong that they've put this on the five of us to make this decision. Something I found interesting, some school boards are opting to do a non-binding referendum and putting it to the community for a vote. I recognize our, our date to vote on this is after May 1st, so it would delay it a year. But we could do that if we wanted to. It's an option to discuss.
So, so it's your understanding and I didn't, I didn't understand this?
So there are communities.
Do we have to make a decision? That's the question.
Well, is the decision we're making in principle just for next year? And we could make a different decision, we could?
No. Want to, right.
But, but could we?
Could we delay it for a year if we wanted to take a vote of the public?
That's kind of what I read, that you can.
But once, once we have the exemption, we can never take it back? Never?
Interesting.
Never, ever.
But no, I'm serious.
Well, no, I, I think that's, yeah.
To the best of my know.
Unless the state law changes?
Well, I mean, that would make, that would make sense to me.
Which also shows the sort of insanity of it, that the five of us are making a decision for the community that's binding forever.
Right.
Because most of the decisions we make can actually be undone in, at future points if somebody wants to spend more money here, less money there, right?
I guess we want to make sure that that's true.
Well, you know, the, now that, now that you're saying that it's binding forever in perpetuity, the scary thing, I never thought about this, but the scary thing would be, I can backtrack for one second. I guess, did you also distribute this? There was a clearinghouse done of a lot of the neighboring districts. And some haven't determined yet, but most of the ones that had been polled by the clearinghouse indicated, not one district indicated they were going to grant the exception. And most indicated that they were not going to grant it. And I guess the concern would be, you don't want to be the one district that does grant it because then you could end up with a population that is, you know, weighted much more heavily toward, you don't want veterans to move to Irvington if we're the only district that grants it, which I, I'm concerned.
Although, the amount of money that we're talking about, you know, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, it would be a lot for everyone else to bear.
Oh, that's true. If it was all better, right.
I mean, it's just, but it's interesting looking at the clearinghouse. I was surprised, actually. I thought it would be kind of mixed, but.
I can see that.
It, I don't know where I got that. It looks like, it looks like most of the districts that were polled, all of them, nobody said yes. One or two said still discussing and all the rest said they're, they're going to pass on this.
So if I, if I can speak to both of, two, two last things. When that poll went around, everybody's having the same kind of debate. And I have to tell you, barely anybody contributed to the poll because everybody's in, in the same position.
Okay.
And no one knows what, which direction to go. And speaking to some of my peers, there are some communities where they feel the obligation to act and they believe their boards will, will pass this. And again, a question that Beverly will follow up with counsel. I do, we, we cannot make a, I believe if we put this up for a public vote, it's a public opinion poll. It cannot be a binding resolution.
I said, it's a non-binding referendum.
I like that.
It just takes the pulse of the community. But it's, you know, if they all say yea, we could still say no. It's non-binding, that's.
I, I like that idea because I feel like, like you said, it's, I don't have a pulse from the community as to what Irvington people want to do.
Could we do this non-binding resolution at the same time we do the bond referendum?
That's in September.
That'd be September. We'd have to.
We could attach it to the budget in May.
We could just do it.
We'd do it in the budget in May. There'd be a separate line on it.
If I may, and I, I don't want to, I, I can't quote who the legislators that actually spoke out, but they, where it's not impermissible, there are, they frown upon, stated that they frowned upon boards of education going out and seeking that type of polling to inform their decision.
Well, that's the further cop-out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was when this first broke, it was quoted in a couple of different things.
It's nice to know their opinion on that.
Yeah.
For sharing.
I'd like to give them my opinion.
A couple of informational questions, if I may. Kind of a basic question. What does, what, what does it take to be a veteran? Do you have to be in combat?
There's different categories.
There's all different categories.
Three different categories.
And there are different steps in terms of the exemption?
There's different percentages based on three different categories, I believe, correct?
I mean, it's more than having been in the armed forces.
Correct. It's a veteran in a combat zone, veteran in a non-combat zone.
But during a war.
It's for wartime veterans.
Right.
There's three, non-combat zone, combat zone is a safety.
So you could be a Korean veteran who was stationed in an airbase in Texas and be considered a veteran? Like my father.
During wartime, yes.
He was during the Korean War, yeah.
Did you get the exemption?
Well, he, well, no. He, I guess. I never thought of him as a veteran. Thought of somebody who made a very wise choice at a difficult time. And how much do they get again? You said, I think.
It's approximately 15% of their assessed valuation.
Just with respect to school taxes?
Yes.
Just, and, and does, does the village and the town already have this? Or do they have to make the same decision?
No, they already have it.
They already have it?
Yeah. I don't know about the village, but I know Greenberg can't do it, they do.
Yeah, I, I think the village did or does.
I think that's right.
You know, I'll give you my, you know, I'm happy to hear community, you know, input. And obviously, if the community wants to go, you know, if we're clear they want to go one way or another, I do feel that we, I would want to respect that. You know, but I, my sense is that the, you know, the veterans are providing a service to the country. And it's, it's up to the, you know, if there are, if there are, there are benefits that should go to veterans, it ought to be up to the country as a whole to provide those, not for individual school districts to be in the business of doing that. And, and so my tendency is, and my general feeling is we ought to avoid creating various types of preferences for different groups of people. So everybody pays their share based on simple formulae rather than having veterans or anybody else get special dispensations from their taxes.
You're a brave man to go out on a limb.
Yeah, that's, that's my view. I mean, I'm, again, if I hear that.
Yep. So, so thinking about process and, and the procedure from this point that we'll identify a date for formal public hearing. And at that point, before that, Beverly will seek some guidance from counsel. And we'll have, the board will be able to make a determination on that day if we want to move forward, make an independent decision if you want to poll the community and to make a decision down the road.
Okay.
All right?
It's good? Great, thank you.
And the compass is, I was with Mrs. Montgomery and I took that right off of the tax and finance website, the assessment manual on.
Oh, this is the actual, yeah.
Yes, descriptions of veterans and property.
Thank you very much. Moving forward to our final presentation of the evening, our 2014-15 budget presentation related specifically to athletics, special education and pupil personnel services. For those new to the process.
This is a complex informational text. I can't do this.
You can't?
You have to wait till 11th grade before you read that, John. This is, this is part of our, our series of budget presentations that, that take apart our budget to explain the variances from the previous year and suggestions by the administration for this year.
So as, as I promised in the beginning of the meeting, we're starting off with applause for our students and we'll end with an applause because of the great work that is going on in, in the respective departments. But I have to say that when we think about our budgeting process, we have to look at it as a journey. We have to think about, you know, the efforts that we have here. We strive to maintain a fiscally sound, responsible budget. Last year, we had the tremendous support of over 60% of the voters on Election Day to support our budget. And we're grateful for the support that came forth. But one of the considerations after having that tax cap override was the fact that we want to be able to really work to maintain property tax increases. But as we go through this process, there are times when there are curveballs. There are times when we have unexpected expenditures and changes and expenditures and revenues that come along the way. We're still committed to that initiative. And I want to say that this is a journey. So as we go through the conversation today, you'll see numbers that fluctuate, numbers that look like the increases are big. But let's not be scared. It's a part of the process. These are the financial conditions the district's facing, the expenditures that we have to address. And in doing so, I'm confident at the end of the day that in collaboration with our board, we're going to come up with that fiscally sound budget. But it's a budget that's going to be responsible to our students. It's going to be responsible to our taxpayers, not only because it is going to be fiscally sound, it's going to be a good investment in our schooling and education that we provide for our children. So with that said, tonight, we're going to begin to focus on three different areas. And tonight, we have special education, pupil personnel services and athletics. As a team, Ms. Miller, Mr. Palermo, and Mr. McCormick are going to walk you through items in their particular departments and their responsibilities. They're going to highlight some of the variances that are occurring from year to year. They're going to talk about some asks or ideas that we have to maybe improve, improve services, to enhance opportunities for our children or to better meet the needs of our district operations. Beverly will dive into some of the finances around that. Supporting documents are available, some at the back of the room, others posted on our website if you want to delve a little deeper into these numbers. So to begin, I want to pass off to Mr. Palermo, who is going to chat about special education.
Thank you. This opportunity tonight to talk about projections in the next year and what we're looking at. Obviously, what Dr. Harrison said is very true, particularly in this area of the budget. Numbers within special education can change dramatically fairly quickly if a student has a high, high-cost kind of placement. with a high, high-cost kind of placement moves into the district, or moves out of the district, or suddenly, you know, develops needs that require a higher level of service. So even last year, after we made this presentation, Beverly and I talked throughout the rest of the school year, as some of those changes may, you know, happen and we make changes as it goes along. This year, we are looking at a budget category variance of 6.19% or approximately 60%. And we're going to keep tonight some initial results for specific group or community, and that represents about 0.8%. We're looking at an actual budget increase of 6.1% as those considerations. I will say that a large part of the community with the budget increase is driven by out-of-district placements that are paid for tuition in place and other places. And we tend to use an 8% increase in tuition rate as a number that's borne forth over the past quite a number of years as a good predictor. And then, of course, we have contractual salary increases and increases that can change in the number of placements. Consideration number one, in terms of things that we think we'd like to change for next year in order to enhance our program, is create an assistant director of pupil personnel services. Right now, we have a position called CSE/CPSE chairperson, and we would like to make that, that's currently under a teacher's contract. With the new.
With the new APPR regulations, one of the, the areas that's become increasingly time-consuming is doing increased numbers of evaluations and observations of staff. And obviously, someone who's on a teacher's line can't share in, in doing that for the department, so a title change would be necessary for that, to make that change.
Can you do that?
Oh, can do that. There we go. Thank you. So the expenses, actually, in this case, you may or may not know that much of the special education funding comes through federal grants that we received. They're called entitlement grants, and each student generates a certain amount of federal aid. So we would be able to take 15, 15% of that salary and pay it out of the grant, which actually then represents a $6,000 savings, or almost $7,000 savings in the general fund as a result of splitting the, between the two, the federal and the general fund. We are also increasing, experiencing increasing number of students in our schools, students with behavioral difficulties, that to some degree have been unaccustomed to, to managing. So what we'd like to do is start to begin creating an infrastructure that will allow us to meet those needs of those students more effectively within the district. We'd like to add a teaching assistant, and as many of you know, we have many aides, we have a few teaching assistants in the district. We'd like to add a teaching assistant that would be not attached to a particular class or attached to a particular student, but rather become a highly trained individual, and it's linked to my next request on the next slide, which would provide some of that training. But a person that, when a student is having behavioral difficulties, the teaching assistant could come into the room, help the teacher work with that student, or get the student on, on track, stabilize them, manage the, help them manage the behaviors, and then get out, so that we don't commit necessarily to a one-to-one aide for the rest of that student's career, which sometimes happens in the school district. Or we perhaps don't have to look for an outside placement because we've had expertise injected into that individual classroom for that student in a timely manner to begin to manage those. So the cost of that would be approximately $42,000, both salary and benefits combined. And here's the other piece of that would be increased behavioral intervention services. We can get a behavioral consultant through BOSI, and the concept would be for that person to be onsite one day a week with the teaching assistant, the previous request, being a presence on a daily basis of the training and expertise represented by that consultant. So the consultant would work very closely to train the TA, and then would be onsite on a regular basis to, to help implement those behavioral strategies. And we're estimating about $35,000. It is a service that comes through BOSI, so it is aidable with BOSI's aid. All right?
Thank you. Okay, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, just so people understand, when you say it's a $35,000 increase to our budget, but it's aidable through BOSI, what exactly does that mean?
That means there's a, a piece on the revenue side in terms of BOSI's aid that comes back against that, so.
The following year.
The following year, yes. So.
Do you know the percent? I'm just offhand, I'm sorry, I didn't want to pepper you, but is there a percentage offhand?
It's about.
50?
Forty, between 40 and 50%.
It seems like general, I don't, don't know how you, how to suggest you present this, but it'd be really helpful to have, you know, to know what the net cost of these, even if you have to delay it a year, it's still, you know, there's a big difference between the gross cost and the net cost after aiding, and, you know, to help us think about, to weigh the, weigh these items.
Makes sense.
The first two line items are instructional salaries, and most of that is just contractual increases. You'll, you'll note that the second line item, non-instructional salaries, is the increase of $30,000 for the new crisis TA. That's incorporated into that total. The equipment line item is the same, so is the other expense line, but you'll notice that for this year, we expected to spend in that line 47,000. That includes the stipulation agreements. We've decided to have a clearer trail and break that out and segregate it, so it's two lines down, so 28,000. So if you looked in the line items there, the 20 for next year plus the 28 is 48,000, which is almost what we're going to expend this year. The OT services, testing, homebound, and JCOS, all are staying the same. We believe that we can stay within the same budget figures for next year. Minor increases in copier services, professional development. Legal, we had one large case this year, which we do not anticipate next year, so it's a minor increase there. Supplies, there was some one-time-only additional supplies for this year that we don't anticipate for next year, so there's a decrease there. Computer software is for students, and again, there was some one-time-only this year, which don't anticipate next year. The big line items are tuition. You'll notice that this year, there was a shift between under, estimated to spend. If you totaled together the 470 and 490 codes, those are both tuition, it would be approximately 2.5 million, and that's what we expect to expend. There was some shift in students from what we anticipated would be BOSI's placements to outside placements. There's a significant increase for next year because we've had additional placements this year, and next year, we already know that we're having three kindergarten placements, outside placements for next year, new students, as well as one other student. So there's four new placements for the 14-15 year already, so that will account for the majority of that increase.
And we should note, that's our best guess at this point. I mean, obviously, particularly when you're talking about student, incoming kindergarteners, they're very young, things can change from month to month, month, so, but at this point, that's our best estimate. It may, may make sense if we do it. You want to wait till the end, or do you want to ask them now?
Might be easier to ask them now.
It might, because they separate, so please.
I was just, this is not for tonight, but it, do we have, just to gauge the sort of spending we're doing, do we have anything like student count or enrollment figures involved in special ed that we could look at, like a few-year history over and look at what we're spending?
Or replacements?
Well, overall, and I guess I'm struggling, this is obviously a very diverse population with very diverse needs, and it's hard to.
We do, and that would, there's definitely been an upward trend in terms of the numbers of students with disabilities, and as I've said even in past years as well, it's, the whole story isn't even told by the numbers. The complexity of the kinds of disabilities that we're seeing is also increasing significantly.
Right. I mean, I just might be interested in just to understand the, the program better, to see kind of how that's evolved over the last few years, if you have the ability to produce numbers on that. Not, obviously, for tonight, but.
It is interesting, because you have an increase of one student, and that increase of one student be anywhere from 35,000 to 180,000.
Understood. Right. Or even less, I suppose, right? You know, if that student has relatively minor needs, minor special needs. That's all I have on this.
On the crisis teaching assistant that you're, that's a consideration, is that person only push-in, or I, I guess I'm wondering if that person would also be able to work with, like, take, pull kids out who are struggling and work with them, or give them an, an alternative other than the teacher as a place to go? Or is it only that they're going to push in?
Unlike the concept a number of years ago that we did, where we created a room, this is not a room, this is not a place. This is a person who's highly trained, and the idea would be to keep the student in the classroom as much as possible.
Okay.
Obviously, if that student needs a break and they need to take a walk or something like that to calm themselves and then return within a few minutes.
Right.
That, you know, that's entirely possible, but it's not a place. We're not talking about a place.
So it's really a push-in. Okay. And then on the behavioral consultant, I think you said you have it currently, we work with them.
We actually have a, a behavioral consultant right now who works largely with, whose expertise is really applied behavioral analysis, which is a more technique that's tended to be used with students on the spectrum. In this case, we're talking about a, a different consultant that has a broader approach and a broader spectrum of ability, and different kinds of techniques that could be used. We actually have, we have a consultant that's working right now this year, who is training, training our psychologists in using functional behavioral assessments to the, to the best advantage and behavioral, creating behavioral plans, and it's that person that we have in mind to continue this work.
So it's a different thing. I was just wondering if the days were the same, but it's a different, it's completely different.
Right. One of the things that we found with the, the consultant that's the ABA slash Spectrum consultant, is that her time has been spread a little thin because she's, we have two self-contained classes she spends a great amount of time with, and then we have students that are sort of scattered all over the district. So we thought that to sort of share the wealth and split the, split the need along expertise that's needed would be more effective than just having the same person come in for an additional day.
And one more question, which I, I think I just didn't hear the answer, I think Bev gave it, but on the line item 400.4, other expense, CSE, it's higher this year significantly, and then next year, we're not projecting to increase, projecting to go back to not what we spend, but what we budgeted? Did you say that was going to be in another line?
Yeah, two lines down, we broke, we separated the parent placements, the stipulation agreements.
Oh, okay, the stipulation, okay.
There's the 28 grand.
Okay, so that's almost the same.
Two lines down.
That's right here. The 20, and then two lines down is the 28, so if you add those two together.
I'm sorry.
They almost add up.
Okay. Sorry about that. I knew you said that, but I couldn't find it. Okay. Oh, wait, one more. Yes, one more.
Sure.
On the legal, I'm just curious, from your thinking, that you're actually budgeting less than what we're spending this year, and you feel comfortable that we're going to be okay on that?
Because as, as Bev mentioned, we had a significant litigation, which is over and done with, or at least at this level, so.
So, okay.
I had one question that I forgot to ask. On the, on consideration to the crises teaching assistant, Scott, you talked about there being various benefits to that, and I'm not talking about employment benefits, but in terms of not needing, maybe not needing an aide or a, or not needing somebody or somebody, and what, what that gets me thinking is, is this is again, the kind of the gross cost of what it would cost to pay this person, but there are, there are offsetting benefits, it sounds like, and I don't know if there's a way to quantify that, but.
Well, that's our hope. If we, if, for instance, if we put a one-to-one aide in place for a student, the cost would essentially be the same as hiring this person, whereas we're hoping we can meet the needs of multiple students on a short-term basis, rather than, once, it tends to be, once you put a, a one-to-one aide on an IEP, that it stays there. And sometimes that may still have to happen. I mean, this is not a guarantee, but at least it would be an opportunity to get in and deal with something as a crisis time or time period, rather than for the long term. And similarly, when students get very much out of control and are having a lot of difficulty managing their behaviors, they're disrupting a classroom to the extent that we sometimes say, geez, we have to start looking for an outside placement of, of another type, whereas if we could manage that in the short term more effectively, we could avoid that outcome.
And I mean, it sounds like all of that's very hard to predict and quantify, but I just wonder if there's any way to think at all about budgeting any of this, and, because it does, and, you know, it could.
Well, I think.
Change the spending over time relative to what it would be, but maybe that's some years down the road to really see that.
Right. I think we, you know, a year from now or two years from now, we could start to look at it and say, here, here's some examples, no names obviously attached to it, but we've had X number of cases that we think we've been able to go a different direction, and I think that, but if you look at any single out-of-district placement or a one-to-one aide being put in place, you've paid for that position, you know, if you save either, even one.
Thank you.
I had two quick questions. One relating to the tuition line, obviously, that's a, it's, it's not something that we can do anything about. It's something that we have a moral and legal obligation, and, but I'm curious about the, the timing of, of sort of getting the information about the students that are coming in, because you're obviously getting some notice from parents who are interested in coming to our district. How does that work exactly, and, and how do you then kind of communicate it to Chris and Dr. Harrison and Ms. Miller?
Well, it's, it's a good theory that we get any kind of advanced warning. I mean, something could happen tomorrow, or a student registers, and.
Of course. But I'm just using this year as an example, right?
Right. You know, last year was an example where we had a student who was already in a residential placement, who, you know, there was a, a change of their home situation, and they moved into Irvington, and boom. Instead of the bill being sent to another school district, it was being sent to us. So we, as those things ebb and flow, Bev and I try to keep in communication and say, hey, we're up one, we're, you know, even after we did the, the budget last year, we, we were able to cut it down a little bit, and then we saw it, and then we had some replacements. So it's hard to predict it, but we do try to keep in contact with each other, saying, we're up, we're down, we're still with, you know, we're, we're down, but we're still within the budget because somebody else moved away, and so it counterbalanced it or whatever.
I guess I'm just curious, in this particular case, where we have four, three kindergarten students, that's, it sounds like that's a little unusual all at once like that, certainly historically. But how did that, I'm just curious, how does that, did that come about? Did the student, the parents contact you, like in December or January?
Well, they, they go through the CPSE process, so they're known to us because they're already receiving preschool services in this, in this case.
Preschool services, I see.
And so we're able to predict, obviously, those students' needs a little better, even though still it requires action by the committee on special education, which doesn't happen yet this early in the school year. So that's why I'm saying it's our best guess, because ultimately, it's going to be the committee's decision, and the parents are involved in that process, and it's, it's not as simple as it sounds. But, but when we look at the needs right now, we're starting to look at it and go, wow, it looks like three of them are probably, and it could end up being four, it could end up being two, it could end up being whatever. Once, particularly with the little ones, it's even harder to predict because we know that child development, kids change dramatically in a matter of months, and sometimes behavioral and management issues get brought under control. Sometimes the issues are medical or more long-term disabilities that are not likely to be brought under control through, you know, a simple intervention. So I guess it's really a matter of. of experience and looking at each case individually and trying to predict it as best we can. And, and then the move-in factor is just a wild card all the time, either moving in or moving out or changing needs of students.
And then I guess the second question is just, can we benchmark our kind of tuition placements against the other quad district, school districts, for no other reason, just to have the information, because I think in the backup data that Bev supplied, that's going to be an estimated twenty-five students for that one point, for that two million dollar budget line. Am I correct, Bev? I think it's twenty-five stu.
The outside placement.
Yeah, with the outside.
Rate is set by the state.
Well, I just mean the number of students, right, so that we're, we're just sort of looking at how many students that are, that we, we are sending to outside placement and so that we would know how we're doing against other school districts in our area. But I think it's just useful to know that data.
We could take a look at that. I'm just, I'm not sure because it's so individually-driven how meaningful the data is, you know, and also, you know, you'd have to look at it at the context too of the in-district resources that the district is putting into programming, which is.
Sure.
You know, and one of the things that we look at every year is our list of kids that are in out-of-district placements, you know, is there any particular clump of kids or particular kind of disability or age group? And unfortunately, they sort of are spread across the K to twelve continuum and they're spread in different kinds of disabilities, so it's not so simple of just saying, oh, let's create a class and, and put a bunch of kids in it because they have dramatically different needs, different age groups and there are regulations governing all those things as well.
Yeah, I didn't mean that we would draw any conclusions from it. I just meant that to have the data would be useful to understand what's happening in the other districts.
Yep. And there, the other piece that I think isn't up on this sheet is that there are, there's, we get high-cost aide on students that are in out-of-district placements, so there's a portion of that we also get back. And, and I'm not, please don't ever characterize that as meaning that those are money-making kids, because I've heard that in the past and that's not the case. I mean, the, the cost far exceeds the amount of aide that we receive, but there is some consideration from the state. We also accept students on tuition basis into our special education programs, so we have a number of students in the district who are, other districts are paying tuition to access our programs. And the nice thing about that is if you have an, an eight-one-one classroom, which is eight students, a teacher and an aide, and you have six in it and the other two spots are filled by out-of-districts, it doesn't cost you anymore. You've already hired that teacher, you've already hired that aide, you've hired for the most part the materials in the classroom. So it's, it's a hedge against these, these costs.
That line will be reflected on when I present the revenue side.
Thank you.
I just have one question. The crisis teaching assistant, where you have budgeted for thirty thousand, you compared that to a one-on-one, you know, aide currently. It seems to me, based on your description, this crisis teaching assistant would have a more of a skill set, or maybe I'm, I'm reading into your comments too much, so it seems like maybe, I don't know, is that a realistic salary for the type of person and the skill set you're looking for?
I think that our idea would be to hire someone, I mean, teaching assistant is, has a higher level of training than an aide in most cases, not all cases, because sometimes we get lucky with the folks that apply for aide positions. But it would allow us then to, to train that person to a higher degree because we'd be using them in a specialized capacity.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
PPS, still me. So, under the pupil personnel services budget, the highlights are, again, a variance of about seven point nine one percent, the actual budget increase being five point oh five percent, and the increase, the increase as a result of new considerations being two point eight six, or about twenty-seven thousand. What we are looking at, the budget consideration here is, we have a position that's called, and it says social worker, social worker slash community aide. We're really talking about the title, community aide, and we have a person in the district who does that. And she doesn't necessarily work with students directly. Her job is to connect families with resources in the community. She also, she happens to be a certified social worker and does complete many of our social histories for the Committee on Special Education. We also feel that one of the areas that we are, need to expand our services and our expertise is in the area of transition services. We have an obligation as a school district to not only see students with disabilities through their twelve or thirteen years or until they're age twenty-one in the, providing the services in the district, but also to put the steps in place for them to take the next step once their school career is over, whether it be in, off to college or into the world of work or through some kind of support system after they leave schools. And we, we do some work in that area, but we could do more and I would like to have our community aide be more involved in that process as well. The position used to be a full-time position. A number of years back, it was cut in half during a similar budget discussion and I think those needs with an overlay of a lot of families that we've found are in stress because of the financial difficulties that we've seen nationwide, and we've talked about that many times at this table, the impact on our families have created a greater need for us to be able to support families. And this position, a lot of the work that gets done is invisible by design because it's largely confidential. And so, you know, I can't stand up here and say, this is, this is who we connected with this and that, but I can tell you that she is spread very thinly at the moment between all four buildings and a halftime status. And so it's a position that I believe is critical in moving some of our students forward, because in, in removing barriers for families, it allows us to remove those barriers to learning. The student comes to school in better shape to learn when the same family's not as, under as much stress or when there are services being provided in the home as well, that we've helped to facilitate even though we don't deliver those services directly.
You're going to prioritize among the three things that you've just asked for? Would you care to give us a, a ranking?
So unfair.
Four, isn't it?
Hey, that's what my boss asked me when I asked for my budget, so.
Yep. There are actually four items, two of them being linked.
Right. Well, two of them are related, right?
Two of them are related to each other, although not dependent on each other completely. I mean, I could certainly use either of them if I needed to, one or the other, but the two of them together I think would be more powerful than either, either the, just the consultant or just the TA. I mean, I have to, to say that I think we are in dire need of an assistant director status in terms of just overall management of the program. So, and I would also indicate that, you know, those behavioral needs are, it's going to be hard for me because they're all very different kinds of needs that are all needed.
I think you voted for all.
I want them all. I think I voted for all of them, yeah. That's right. I think we should cut, no, no, that's right.
I'm already thinking.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, you're already thinking, okay.
Well, it's the power of going last, Artie.
Yeah. Let me think about it as the process, the overall process starts to unfold. I'm sure there'll be continued conversations here as well.
Is another way to ask that, which of those is kind of the easiest to delay a year?
Well, when you say you want to delay it for a year, you're also delaying addressing those needs for a year, so.
Correct, right.
I think that's a discussion that we may need to have a longer discussion than standing up here right here and rank ordering them. I think that to talk about delaying any one of those, how do we pick and say, well, the families are less important? Oh, well, you know, the students with, with behavioral needs are not so important and the overall management of the program is not important.
But I would like to establish my priority for the board and how I see the value and benefit here in, in taking John's approach. I think we're looking at the need that we see present day in, in the classrooms, the complexity of the student needs that are entering the classrooms. And thinking of the services, the push-in services, as a real preventative measure, an early intervention that's putting our resources into supporting children's needs, I think it has the opportunity of having benefit to enhance kids' experiences for them to be more available for learning at an earlier date in their education, but also from a fiscal standpoint, it prevents opportunities for other costs to be introduced, whether it's a one-on-one aide down the road, whether that is potential out-of-district placements. If we can better support the child's needs as an earlier age, I think there's great benefits there. So to me, that is, I don't want to say ever a gamble, but that is an investment that I think is worth making. I think the assistant director is, is the other area that I would prioritize because there is a reach and an impact there that we can have that's going to touch every child's experience in our schools and, and impact every teacher. To think that we're going to have another person administratively to be able to work with our teachers in the classrooms in that administrative capacity, I think there would be a great benefit. As Scott said, I don't want to undermine the, the significant value of the community aide, but if I'm thinking where we can have the greatest impact in the quickest manner, it'd be the first two items that I mentioned.
Thank you. Good. Thank you.
Okay, so to sum up, the PPS, the health services, the nurses' salaries, that is not, that code does not encompass just basic contractual salaries, but also substitute nurses' salaries as well as additional nurses' salaries for if a special ed child is on a trip and we are mandated to provide services. The equipment line has stayed the same. The school physician has increased and right now the twenty-two thousand is a placeholder. We're still in discussion with the school physician to firm up that figure. The health services out of district is a slight increase. And then supplies is based upon the nurses' requests for supplies for their respective buildings. Psychologists, it's basically contractual salaries. And of course, the social worker salary Scott just went over. So without the additions, it's a five point oh five percent increase in all of those codes.
Can I ask a question? I mean, you're not asking for another psychologist, I know that, but I'm just curious in terms of how do you feel they're doing in terms of caseloads and, and numbers of students per psychologist? I know we have four now and, you know.
We actually have five now, but.
Oh.
If you want to give me six, I'd be thrilled, but I'm, I'm not asking at this point. I think that, and one of the reasons, and we've talked about this before actually, since we've, we have five, one of the reasons is that we have that number of students who are outside of the district who we also address all of their needs and, and work with them. So, but at this point, I feel like our psychologists are very much in demand and they're working very hard, but I think that, you know, we have a significant, given the, the needs across the district right now, I think we've got enough psychologists and a reasonable number and reasonable caseloads, but that doesn't mean that they're sitting around with their feet up.
Got the, the nurses' salary line. You said that's not just salaries, but it's other, can you just, do you have the breakout or can you give the breakout of how much your salaries or?
I don't have the breakout with me, but I could provide it to you.
Be helpful.
But again, we have to, you know, have some special ed students accompanied by a nurse when they're on a trip. We have to provide substitute nurses if ours are out on a leave of absence or any, even a day's absence, we have to have a sub.
It, it'd be nice to see it if we can, it's, you know, if you have a chance.
I'll give you that breakdown.
They're going from point five to one, adjustment, adjusted.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm glad to come back up. We start our evening with little highlights from the fall season. And before I get to our slides, if you'd indulge me for one minute, I'd like to talk about some highlights from the winter season. I just got some breaking news. Both our boys and girls' basketball teams are the number one seed for the upcoming sectional tournament, which will start for us next Tuesday.
Wow.
Which is, I think, the first time in history here, number one seed for both boys and girls. We've seen the girls do quite well the last few years. They're sixteen and two this year. The boys are seventeen and one. Both of them are league champs, which is a, a nice feat. So that's kind of some breaking news. We've also had a, a great winter season. Our wrestling team this past weekend produced a sectional champion, Anthony DeNardo, who will go compete at the States in three weeks. And we had two second-place finishers, Adam Krieger and Zach Silverheart, and a third place with Peter Jones. So our winter season has, has been phenomenal so far. So before I get to my asks, I just want you to hear what's going on. Half sort of prioritized already, so. So just as Scott.
Touche, Artie, touche.
Just as Scott presented before, the first slide talks about our budget variance and the first number of the four point six four is actual budget to budget without new budget considerations. And those are basically tied into contractual obligations. And the second piece of that is the eight point five four, which are new budget considerations, which really fall into, for me, three categories, which would be safety, program management, and opportunities for our students. So the first budget consideration speaks to our need for an increase in our athletic trainer services. Currently, we have a very part-time trainer service, which is through the Mercy College. This came to us as, I think, a result of a few years ago when we got a new contract with our school physician and there was some money available after the contract was signed and we were able to get a trainer on a part-time basis. So we've had a rotation of trainers, two or three of them, who cover our games, up to our certain budget line. And now we're asking for an increase mainly because we've seen an increase in the need for management of concussion protocols. We have a number of protocols in place and unfortunately, due to these concussions, it does involve a number of follow-ups with each of the students. And consistency is a big part of this. There is a piece that falls on the coaches, but the communication between the coach, the school nurse and the school doctor, as well as the student's own primary physician in concussion management is vital. And to have somebody who is involved in the, the assessment to be a, a main link there that's consistent on a, on a full-time basis would be huge. The management of student injuries and treatment of student injuries can go a long way to helping our athletes stay involved in their sports, getting treatment so that they don't have to go outside to, to either a physical therapist or their own doctor and can come back to athletic, you know, practices and competitions a little sooner. At the same time, they can actually get a little knowledge about ways in which they can prevent those injuries through different types of injury prevention, stretching and workouts. So that's an increase that, that's being considered. The next one would be, and this was coming from a conversation that David Sotal and I had, which is a restoration of the middle school intramural programs back a few years ago when some of the budgets were made, budget cuts were made, the middle school intramural program was cut. David and I have had conversation. He's had students who are interested in starting this up. The expense is strictly for an individual to monitor it. And I think the primary focus here might be the sixth grade, where in the middle school they don't have intraclassic sports for the sixth graders. And coming out of Main Street, where we do have an intramural program, it would be a continuation of that process. It would be an opportunity for them to get introduced to some of the middle school sports that aren't offered through some of the, the rec programs. And it also would give them opportunity to, to create some of their own leagues and things that they can do. Primarily, the time for this has been before school, just because during lunchtime, we have recess and other issues that, that pertain to our facilities use. And the after-school hours are pretty tough because of all the, the teams that are using the fields and the gyms. But with some creativity, there could be some opportunities to use those facilities at those times as well. Third consideration, and this really comes as a restoration to some point back, going back about seven or eight years. We did have two teams, a seventh and eighth grade boys and girls team at the modified level. This past season, we had to make a number of cuts on both the boys and girls teams to create space and to have a manageable number for one team. So this would be giving students an opportunity to maintain a participation rate. It also would give more players playing time. would give more players playing time during those contests. When you have a large team like 14 or 15 players and you're getting, trying to get them into one contest, it creates some discrepancies and some difficulties for the coach, even though they try to divide it out two quarters apiece. Basic numbers there are to cover the coaches, one boys', one girls', coach additional, the officials per contest, chaperones slash timekeepers for the games, and some uniforms to cover both teams. Fourth consideration, the varsity winter track assistant coach, which we haven't had for a number of years. We used to have it, and our numbers have grown back in this program. Currently, our winter track program has over 50 students involved, and it's one coach who's monitoring them. And winter track, as you know, if you look outside, is a little difficult to do outside. So it becomes an indoor season. They compete indoors, obviously, at the Armory and at some of the Rockland Community College venue. But the person who's, he's done a phenomenal job this year, you know, monitoring both athletes who are doing field events in the gym, trying to get sprinters outside when the track is clear, distance people, and, you know, having a program that he can monitor and watch all those students at the same time is almost impossible. So to keep that program viable and for safety concerns, an extra set of eyes and somebody who can assist in maybe some of those venues. In the spring, we have assistant coaches to help with some of the field events and obviously with the boys and girls. We have a boys' and girls' team in the winter, and it's one coach doing both. The last is a clerical assistance increase from .25 to .5. Going back a couple of years, we had a .5, but that .5 was divided up into some other areas. And then recently, it went back down really to a .25 with some responsibilities as assistant principals, clerical assistants, and really managing some of the clerical duties in the main office of the high school. So the increase here would be really getting more focus on athletics, which will allow us to have a much better communication system through our website, through our calendars, through our messaging, out through the phone lines, taking care of department business such as purchase orders and business items, and trying to get a handle on our scheduling needs, which can be quite complex. And if somebody's not really invested in the program or the actual work they're doing, it's very difficult to get them up to speed so that they know exactly what some of those scheduling needs are, so they can handle some of those questions.
Let me just add one. The consideration three of the basketball, are there also transportation costs that would be involved with that, or would it be the same transportation?
Yeah, they would travel, for most of that, they would travel on the same bus.
Okay.
So they would do a doubleheader when they go to the next site, that's what most schools do. Or they would actually, they had two gyms, so they could play some in one gym and the other. So the transportation would be the same, because you're doubling the cost.
Couple of questions on the trainer.
Yep.
Is that an increase of 30,000, or is that the total for the...
No, that's an increase of 30,000. That would bring us to about, well, close to $45,000, which would allow us to really have one person...
So full-time would be like 45?
About 45, yeah.
And would they be an outside person, or would they be a district employee?
Probably an outside person.
Okay. And then my last question about that is, how does that work full-time for a trainer? Because obviously, they're, do they start at like 2:00?
Yeah, so the way you schedule them is to cover your times when your athletes are getting out to the fields and covering through your events. So most trainers usually, at full-time, at schools that have full-time trainers, commit it to and stay to the last event. And then when there's maybe a week or two in between seasons, they might not be scheduled as much. They might be in a couple of days just for treatments, but you schedule them through the times where your events are most happening. And you get them in a little early to get the kids ready for those events.
How much of the trainer time is concussion protocol-related as opposed to sort of traditional trainer?
I think it's becoming more and more focused on those protocols because there are steps that have to be met in order to clear students for practice and for games. So I know right now, the conversation that takes place between our school doctor, the school nurse, myself, and the coach is pretty complex when you're looking at anybody who's been diagnosed, who then has to go through the protocols of being cleared. And the trainer would be very involved in that. But there's also other, you know, other pieces to it that are more traditional, but the concussion piece has been, has definitely been raised.
And what role does the, with all those other professionals involved, that don't really understand what the role of a trainer is?
Yeah, really, the first assessment, and obviously, at the site, at the game, if there is any type of head trauma, and the official isn't the person who calls that person out of the game, the trainer can assess right there on the sidelines. It takes a little burden off the coach so that they can continue coaching, and the trainer can assess, and then they can establish right then maybe where the next steps are going. And then obviously, the follow-up, when you are clearing that person back to practice or competitions, there's a protocol they have to meet. And to have them go through that three, four-step protocol, the trainer can be monitoring that to see if there's any regression back where they aren't cleared, and they need to go back and get rechecked.
Don't we have often a lot of games running at the same time? So trainer can only be at one event, right? Say varsity football, for example.
Yeah, so obviously, you put them at the highest priority where there's the highest possibility for impact and contact, where concussion's more likely to occur. But being on the campus, if you're out monitoring a soccer game and there's some injury in the gym in the volleyball contest, that person's there. Right now, they're basically covering our high-impact sports at the varsity level, not even doing the sub-varsity levels.
And would they typically not travel with the teams, and we'd rely on the host school?
I would say the majority of their time would be spent covering the host contests, but as we get further into like sectionals, the possibility is there for them to travel with the team.
And then we would be providing the service to the visiting team as well.
We'd probably be providing services to our own team. The other team may have a trainer there at their home site, but obviously, our trainer would know our students a little bit better.
I was wondering, not the sectionals, but the regular season, you know, the visitors show up without a trainer?
Regular season, yeah. They would really be at our home site to cover our contests. We pretty much have home contests going on each day.
I think clarity, Artie. I think John is asking is if a competition on Irvington facilities, if a child from Dobbs Ferry was injured, would our trainer assess the Dobbs?
Absolutely. We've had that for us when we've gone to other places. Their trainers assess, sorry.
One, there might be, might be a question. Of course, I'm not sure if I'm going to answer this, but when you're looking at some of these, let's, you know, smaller ones, say the middle school intramural is 4,500, or assisting coach, a couple thousand, is that something that private fundraising could pay for, or grant? I always, not clear on what could be picked up by, you know, like a maybe PTSA grant, or maybe a bunch of parents get together and say, okay, you know, here's, here's a donation of 4,500 to cover that. Are we able to do that for things like that?
I think you're, I think there's, you're able to do it. I think it's bad practice because what it does, it puts us in a position where then parents are able to fundraise to support a pet project or initiative that may not be necessarily in line with district desire or goal. And you're starting to engage the community in paying for the salary of our employees. I think it's the district's responsibility to do that. And if we're going to support this initiative or any other club or coach, I believe that the district should bear the cost of that. I'm uncomfortable with thinking we should have community fundraising for those types of events.
But is that, just to clarify, clearly you feel that way, but legally, is that a thing, or is that just your strong recommendation?
I don't think there's, that's my strong recommendation. I don't think there's anything legally that precludes us from that. I think when we get to the curriculum-based presentations, there'll be a similar conversation that'll come up regarding Main Street School and the musical. It's something that has been cut, that has been funded from some years through grant monies, and I believe that we should own that, and we need to provide that experience for our children. And again, it's another $4,000-some dollars. I think we need to find a way to do that.
Although there's a somewhat, there's, I think, a distinction to be made between, you know, sort of targeted fundraising for a particular program versus, you know, the PTSA and the IEF having their own disciplined approach to what they choose to fund, which is, it's not quite as random as, you know, it's not quite as subject to the kind of favoritism that you're thinking of, I think. And those, especially the IEF, exists to fund various things like that, right?
Okay, thank you. I guess at this point, I'd like, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, geez. Ready to move on. I love it.
A quick summary. The first line item, the coaches' instructional salaries, that would include about two-thirds of the new coaches, because that code is broken down. Coaches are not all instructional people. Some of them are non-instructional, so we have to divide that code. The chaperones and timekeepers reflect increases that were already detailed for the increases. The equipment is staying the same. The other expense line, the 34.6 incorporates the $30,000 increase for the athletic trainer. Equipment repair is the same, and supplies are increased by $16,200. And basically, that is due to a large increase because we want to provide some additional uniform replacements. And the detail sheet will reflect the teams that Artie has proposed to provide new uniforms for, including the new teams.
All right. We have one more back. Overall running summary.
So in all of the presentations to date, we've summarized them, and we're now looking at budget-to-budget of just the presented segment so far of a 3.93% increase in the budget. The presentation on the 25th will incorporate all of the remaining categories so that by two weeks from today, you will have a good picture of the overall budget. And at that time, I think I'm going to give you an estimated revenue side so that you'll have a full budget to work with.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. I guess at this point, I'd like to ask, move into 13.1 and ask the community for any comments or questions.
Put the mic.
Either on this budget presentation, and since it's getting late, on anything else that's on anybody's mind with the understanding about our three-minute rule and the late hour.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, okay. I'm Cheryl Freshman, and I live at 10 Kayuga Lane in Irvington. And I just wanted to let everybody know that there's about 10 of us in this room that have children with special needs, some of us children with significant special needs. And we're here to, not only hear what Scott have to say and hear what you have to say, but also to thank you, you know, for what you do provide for our children. We do feel very lucky to live in Irvington, but I also want to let you know that none of us want to be in the position that we're in. I have three students in Irvington schools, one of which, two eighth graders, one of those eighth graders is an out-of-district child. And I can tell you by any of the parents that are here now that have out-of-district children, we would do anything to bring our kids back into district and to be able to have them educated alongside their peers. They just can't be, and it would be a lot more expensive and more difficult for the school district. I also want to let you know, as a, in my other life, not being a mother of three children, I'm an attorney that sues school districts, and spend a lot of time suing school districts on special ed matters. And I do want to say how lucky we are in Irvington to have, you know, Gail and Scott kind of putting forth these proposals, like that behavior proposal. You know, not having that kind of support in the schools with the kind of behavior problems that you're seeing, it's in all the districts all over Westchester, and we need that support in Irvington, or we're going to be stuck in lawsuits because we can't appropriately educate the children. And I also wanted to speak to, I think there was a comment about looking at the different quad districts and what they do for their out-of-district students. And I just, from someone that's kind of been out there for years in special ed, even before moving to Irvington, I wanted to speak to that. For instance, Ardsley, okay, great district. And when I was looking for a place to live years and, you know, years and years ago before I moved to Irvington, everyone said, move to Ardsley if you have a kid with autism. And, you know, so they had this influx of students, okay, that moved to Ardsley. Ardsley had the program. They also had a lot of students that were tuitioning in to Ardsley. So they had this great program. Now, fast forward, years later, Ardsley's in trouble because they created this monster, which is a great program, but now everyone lives in district, and they're not getting any more tuition, there's no more openings. So it's very difficult, and it's happening a lot. I'm part of a network of about 500 Westchester families, and there's not a day that goes by on Facebook that those families don't say, where's the place to move, you know, that has the best special ed? And there's districts, for instance, districts like Pleasantville, they are like, please don't tell anyone we have a good program. We don't want anyone moving here. Because what happens is the people move in, and our costs go up exponentially. So I think the numbers that you would see from looking at the different quad districts, I know Dobbs Ferry's starting to pull in a lot of kids, well, that's meaning that now more families are going to move to Dobbs Ferry. I think it's better, you know, to kind of think about what we're doing in the district. And I think if you look at other districts in general, we're good. We have a good number of students that are out of districts, but we really keep a lot of very difficult students in district. And I also have to tell you that through the interventions that my younger son has gotten in Irvington, who has an IEP, he went from getting a tremendous amount of services in kindergarten to now being in middle school in sixth grade. And, you know, he has one or two services, and he is doing absolutely amazing. So, you know, these kids grow up, they do, you know, they do better. The investment that you make in them when they're little, you know, I'm hoping that we've come a time when my younger one will not need an IEP, and it's looking that way sooner rather than later. So you did good, and it'll be cheaper now. But we do want to say that we thank you because we are very, we just want to let you know, we know that the law protects us, that we're entitled to a free and appropriate public education, but we are grateful that you've been so supportive as a district for our children.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm way too short for this mic. Hi, my name is Cindy Keefe. I live at 3 Riverview Court in Irvington, of course. And like Cheryl, I want to thank all of you for the support you've given all of our special ed students, including my three, who all have IEPs, and my fourth, who unfortunately had to leave the district because she was, failed to identify as a young child and is now in a different school altogether. That said, I think to both Mr. Harrison's point and to Cheryl's point, the investment in the young child is really a future investment in our budget and conserving our budget going forward. The investment in the PPS department and increasing the condition in that department and giving both Mr. Flaherty and Gail Krieger the support that they need to take care of all of these children is critical to our surviving and maintaining our budget. With regard to the move-in, move-out and the discussion, I can speak to that as a professional Realtor, as a top producer in this village who deals with families every single day. And just like our Facebook page, where we were, when we're all on the same Facebook page, so that you know, there's this Facebook page, Special Moms of Westchester, you can go on it, look it yourself. And every day, there is a question about where to move. I do not say Irvington, although it benefits me professionally and personally. I do not say Irvington. But I will tell you that truthfully, nine out of 10 families that I am currently speaking to, and I share this with Gail frequently, call me, having no idea I have special needs kids, having no idea who I am in the district other than a Realtor. And they say, I have a child, I'm coming from the city, I'm coming from Brooklyn, and I have a child who's in preschool, who is in, you know, coming out of early intervention or coming out of CPSC, or coming with an IEP, and what do I do when I get to Irvington? And as much as I would love to, on a regular basis, give you a heads-up as to all the children that are moving in, I will tell you, it's nine out of 10 families that I am speaking with. This week alone, and I was listening to, you know, Phil, as you asked the question, and even Scott, as you said, you know, the known three kindergarteners, I can already tell you, you're not even close on projections. This week alone, the number of phone calls of buyers, prospective buyers, they may not all buy in Irvington. Quite frankly, if you all go sell your homes, there are no homes to buy in Irvington. So stay put, and you will sell the entire area. Okay? Just go inventory.
I'll sell mine.
If you want to sell your house, I will sell it tomorrow because I have supply and demand. A lot of economics is, we have way more demand than we have supply right now. That said, of the current demand that I speak to on a regular basis, and I'm one out of hundreds of Realtors that are present in this area, I will tell you that only one parent has called me, and I spoke with her very late last night with my husband, Will, at the, she said, how's your gifted and talented program? And I said, I don't know. I'm, I don't, that's not even, I don't even know. Nobody's ever asked me that before. But the rest of them really are, and just if you look nationwide, the percentage of children, whether it's the profoundly disabled like our sons, who are simply a result of premature infants being saved by medical technology and now being thrown into our arms and ultimately through our hands to educate, or the autistic, the autism spectrum, or the ADHD, ADHD, behavioral, undiagnosed but clearly have issues. I really think, and those of us that are out in the community, there's a new out in the community, it's no longer, you know, coming out of the closet, it's now coming out and admitting that you have a child with special needs. As we reach out as a committee, we are finding that there are fewer parents who have the typical child than that have the special needs child. And, you know, as we get further into this and we start to explore special needs that go well beyond what we can see and into perhaps mental illness, I think that it's an explosion. And I think what Scott is asking for is really minuscule compared to what the ultimate need is going to be. And as Cheryl pointed out, is covered. It's a federal law, it's under the IDEA. So whether Scott asks for it or he doesn't, we will pay for it or we need to plan for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sharon Hammer again, 38 Richmond Hill in Irvington. I just wanted to raise one question, which is in the line item of special ed, which is home instruction, $50,000 a year that goes towards home instruction. I think maybe we need to look at that from a couple of different perspectives. The one question is how many kids are on home instruction because of behavioral issues? If getting a behaviorist into the school earlier, if having a social worker with knowledge of community services and families that are struggling can get to those kids earlier, that's an intervention that may avoid home instruction. So that's really something to keep in mind when you're looking at costs as well. The other thing that I would urge you to look at is to look at the quality of home instruction. I don't know how, how the agencies identified that provides the home instruction tutoring. I don't know how it's bid out, but I think it would be wise, if you haven't already, to talk to parents about their experiences and to evaluate the quality of those tutors because I think they're pretty variable. And I know that in talking to parents in our community, they have real questions about the level of expertise of the tutors who they're being given. So that would, just as a, as an aside, if you haven't looked at that, I would urge you to look at that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I would say, Sharon, just one thing of clarity, it goes well beyond thinking about kids that are placed outside of the school because of needs, as you suggested. We have kids that are hospitalized that fall into that category and layers, so.
I'm aware. I'm not saying it's the all. It's that, that, that's, my initial concern wasn't in, but I will tell you that it's a lot of kids, issue that probably, we should use for them.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please.
Not so short. Lauren Gold, 50 Taxler Road. Thank you all for, and thank you Scott for your presentation. I also want to add that the group of parents who are here and talking in relation to the special needs group, many of us are part of the steering committee for the PTSA, for the special needs subcommittee. And we are ready and eager and willing to be working with the PTSA, with the school district, with Scott and Gail, and the board to help, you know, work on these very complex, difficult issues. I, Scott, I just have a clarified question that I think is just important to, for all of us to understand, which is, what is a behavioral intervention? These services that we're talking about, I think a lot of us are linking them to the special needs community, but it's not necessarily the case.
That's true. It's not always a student with a disability and behavioral difficulties don't constitute a disability all by themselves. So that's actually an important point why I brought it up. These could be students who are in the general population, but for whatever reason, whether there's something going on elsewhere in their life that's just causing them to try to exert their own level of control in an inappropriate way over their life, which does happen sometimes and get in and do that. And there's sometimes when it is, the underpinnings are more of a psychological or psychiatric issue that may cause them, or students with all kinds of different disabilities, sometimes in behavioral manner. So all of those populations feed into the student population that we could address with this kind of intervention. And the reason that I like this and I'm proposing is that I see it as a very individualized model. So what we're doing for one student may be completely different than what we're doing for another student, but we want to have not only a highly-trained expert on-site occasionally, you know, on a weekly basis, but somebody that's there on the ground every single day following through with the recommendations of that behavioral expert.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so nothing, anything from the board further? No? Okay, our next meeting will be held here Tuesday, February 25th at 7:30. And can I please get a motion? Oh, first of all, I want to apologize for Maria Kashkian having to leave. She has a sick little boy at home, and so she's a mother first, school board member second. So if I can get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of certain individuals.
Sure.
Tekin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.